Good morning, everyone. It is November 9th, 2023, the School Board Workshop of Manatee County School Board. Before we get started with the agenda, I'd like to, as we approach Veterans Day, I know that the school sites and things will be closed tomorrow, I would just like to say a big thank you to all of our veterans. It should probably be more than one day, we should probably do it every day and not just on a day to acknowledge the veterans that have served. And we've got one right here with us, and Mr. Tatum, Colonel Tatum, thank you very much for your service.
Welcome.
Everyone out in the district, I don't want to name some and not name others because I'll miss, but everybody else out there, thank you very much for your service. We wouldn't be here doing what we're doing without you. So really appreciate it. We did have an agenda amendment that I do want to highlight. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda Amendments on the November 9th, 2023 Agenda, updated November 7th, 2023, and posted to the district website, manteschools.net. The only agenda item was we updated the presentation that we will see in item number three on Student Supports: Mental Health Programming and Florida Resiliency Initiatives. So that is what changed, that presentation was added. So with that, we're going to move to public comments. We have one public comment, and that is Heather Felton. I believe I saw her, there she is. Come on up.
Good morning.
Morning.
You're welcome.
I would like to briefly just state that as a parent and as a teacher, I am glad to see that the board is looking at mental health initiatives for our district. As a parent, I can tell you that one of my children has utilized the social worker on campus for counseling purposes. It was very helpful in dealing with anxiety and other stresses, particularly relating to school. And she found that very helpful, and it was very supportive for her. As a teacher, I myself have had to participate in the baker acting of three students in the last five years. Mental health is a major issue for our kids. This is something that should be taken seriously. They need to have those counseling services available. Our psychologists and our social workers on our campus do an extraordinary job of working with these kids and helping them fight their inner battles. Those inner battles are taking over their education, and when you do not feel safe and you do not feel loved, you can't concentrate on whether or not you remember to bring a pencil to class. These are important issues. Please make sure that you look at this with open minds and open hearts, and please keep these programs going. Our kids really need them.
Thank you. All right, that concludes public comments, and we're going to work to our first workshop item, discussion regarding school board member election boundaries. Mr. Renaldi, I know you've got some things presented, so I would like for Mr. Dye first just to make sure we're all up to speed, public's up to speed with everything from the statutory, you know, what we have to do from that end. So if you wouldn't mind just giving us a synopsis of that, I know it was emailed to us, but for the public to see, and then Mr. Renaldi, you can come on up as well and present.
Yes, good morning, chairman and board members and superintendent. Barely see you over there, Mr. Renaldi. So I just sent the board the statute that regards school board member districting. There's also a section of your policy that very closely follows the statute, its Neola policy 143.1, but it's almost the verbatim statute, it's the old version of the statute, it hasn't been updated yet. And I sent you the board resolution from 2001 that changed the districts at that time. Unfortunately, the attachment's not really legible, but I see you've got some nice maps to go over, which is really helpful. That's one of the toughest parts of this. Just in general, it's a remarkably non-complex process that the board does itself, and it's been around for a long time, it's an old process, and it's not very controversial, the few cases on it are old, and it's really, from a state standpoint, it's just based on balancing the districts by population. And that's the one man, one vote concept, so that districts, you know, separate districts don't have more people than you would be kind of representing more people than another board member. So it's usually done when a census comes out, which is when it was done after the 2020 census, and that's when you have data to look at. But in a high-growth area like Manatee County, you wouldn't want to wait 10 years, because the population's changing rapidly in Manatee County. So you've got that, and sometimes there's a challenge on getting accurate, up-to-date population data. So, and if y'all recall, in 2020, COVID, the census was late. I know Ms. Messenger remembers that, so we were waiting on getting the census data back then, and then did it in 2021. So historically, the district has used the same districts as the county, but the county process was taking a long time, the school board was ready to go, and did their own districts this time, which is what you have today. So, other than that, there's a new prohibition, you've got to do this within 270 days of election. That's new. Used to say you could only do it in an odd year, which is strange, I think they got rid of that, I couldn't find it. This is an odd year, so it doesn't matter. And then, if you're, the other point is, if you redraw the districts and one of you is now in a different district than what you got elected in, you stay a board member your full term, but when your term is up, you've got to run in your new district, if you got converted into a new district than the one you previously were in. Or you could move into your old district. So that's the one little nuance about that I mentioned to y'all, but that's... One other thing I should mention is, in federal law, you can't discriminate when you draw districts in a manner that would discriminate against certain groups or communities. That's not in the state statutes at all, and that's... It's hard to quantify that, because it's really, you would almost have to say that in a certain area of your county, everybody votes the same way, and you're trying to either preserve that or break it up, and you get into the whole gerrymandering type of cases and that kind of thing. But I don't know that's ever been an issue in Manatee County recently, but I thought I'd mention that. There are federal requirements that aren't part of the state statutory scheme about just discrimination, whenever you're doing, not just, not school board, but whenever you're just doing any kind of voting districts, if that makes sense. So I thought I would just mention that. But that's it, that's all I've got.
Thank you. Ms. Bray, I know this was an item, I don't know if you want to say, I know you're a little hoarse this morning, but I don't know if you want to mention your ideas and thoughts behind this, and then we'll give Mr. Renaldi the floor.
My thought behind this is, as a supervisor of elections, having different districts for school board and county commission is primarily a nightmare. And it's also for the voters. It's a hard thing to see, okay, are you in my district for a school board, but you're different in a county commission? So that is the mindset that I had, and to Mr. Dye's point, it's always been that way, it's just as recently that we had changed that, and I think it was because the school board was ready to go, but the county wasn't. They were looking at more data as it was coming in, and they took a little longer. In my opinion, it would, there's no win or lose here. It's a move that I think that would be beneficial for our voters and to our supervisor of elections and to each one of us. I think that it'd be easier if we're aligned with our county commissioner. And to me, I mean, redistricting to match the BOCC is neither one of us can exist without the other. So we're kind of in this thing of, you know, it's our schools, but it's their citizens. So I know that Mr. Renaldi made some diagram of how many schools would change, and that's really not what I was looking at. It's more, I think that we should be uniform with the county. That was my whole mindset.
Thank you. Mr. Renaldi, yeah, I know you've got some of the maps up and ready?
Good morning, Chair, Board Members, Dr. Weisong. I've put a couple packages together for you to consider during this discussion. There are two charts. One of the charts that was just referenced was just identifying the specific schools and what district they are in with the present configuration, and with the county configuration, what districts those will be in, and just identified. One of the things we wanted to make sure was that every district has a high school, and it in fact does, so that worked out fairly well. And as Mr. Dye said, the second graph is the blue-collar graph, and I guess the key for us is the total population, and looking at how the distribution of the population presently exists with the county commission districts, and this is all based on the 2020 census. But as you can see, they're fairly well-balanced, there is one that is 5% larger and one another that's 3% smaller, so from the standpoint of the ability to balance the way you could balance it, it works out fairly well. And in your package, I have four maps, and I'd like to go through those maps, and three of the four are on the big boards as well. The first map is the school board's present boundaries, districts, and that is the one that's top right here. The second map is the county commissions, and that's on the bottom left here. And one of the things that I did with the county commission map, when you look at the 11 by 17 and the larger board, is we are showing a cross-hat area right by District 4, and that is a present neighborhood that one of your, one of the board members resides in, that they would be moving, as Mr. Dye said, they would be moving from one district to another upon the termination of their present election. The third map is kind of a confusing map, but what it does is it overlays the county commission boundaries with our boundaries. So you kind of see what the shift is for the different districts. And then, since we didn't have a lot of detail on Map 3, Map 4 drops roadways in and all that, so you can see, it doesn't show our boundaries, but it does give an idea of what the limits and what the boundaries are for the commission maps as well. Unfortunately, we couldn't bring Map 3 and 4 together and still have, it just became a mess at that point right now. So I've put those maps together and these boards together for the purpose of your discussion, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
We don't, we're not using Granicus, so I'm just going to go ahead and just kind of go around the dais here. Mr. Tatum?
Sure.
Thoughts, concerns, ideas?
Yes, so I too am in favor of this, and that is based specifically and especially on the recent experience I had at the polls back in August of last, of 2022. I would say there were just me personally greeting people at the polls, there were at least two dozen, two and a half dozen people who came to the polls and said, "I'm here to vote for you, Mr. Tatum," and I was like, "That's good to know." And then what happened is they went in because they thought they were in District 5, school board, but they weren't, so they... And it's not about voting for me, I'm just giving you the example of that, they thought they had done their homework, and they were ready to go vote, and then they get to the polls, and the person that they thought they were going to vote for was not on their ballot. So that was a problem. And then the second problem that happened was they'd come out and they were very frustrated, and then it put questions in their mind about election integrity. And I tried to calm them, I'm like, "No, what's probably happened is you're in school board District 1 and county District 5." And we might say, "Well, it's your personal responsibility to know what district you're in, that's an adult responsibility." But I mean, if you've spoken to your county commissioner, and your county commissioner is in District 5, and you kind of have in your mind, you're in District 5, so I don't see that as being irresponsible, and it just causes a lot of confusion for the voters, and it does put a little hint in people's mind, at least for some people, about election integrity. And it just seems like, also for the supervisor of elections, it would be better to have the county districts aligned with the school districts. It's just, basically, it makes it easier and more convenient for the voters, and they won't be surprised when they get to the polls like they were. And these are people that are primary voters, so, you know, they're motivated, they want to come and vote, they've probably done their homework, they actually, some of them had their ballots in their hand, they were ready to go in and do what they wanted to do, but, you know, because of this difference, I think it causes confusion. So I'm in favor of this. As far as, I guess I could make some comments about Mr. Chode, unfortunately, you're messing things up, Mr. Chode. But I wouldn't be in favor of, "Oh, we can't legally move him out," and maybe we might have to leave that little sliver there for you for the time being, as long as you're on the board, but we can talk about that separately. But certainly, I don't want to quote-unquote "move you out of your district," we can't legally do that, and maybe until you're ready to leave, I wouldn't be in favor of that either. But other than that little sliver, I'm definitely in favor of aligning the county districts with the, or the school districts with the county districts to make it more convenient for the voters, easier for the voters, it improves election integrity, and it also helps the supervisor of elections. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Foreman?
Okay. I'm just going to ask questions first go around, okay, because I do have some thoughts, but has the supervisor of elections expressed?
I had a meeting with them.
Okay, and what was his point, because he's already got them all aligned?
I met with the staff, I've been a poll worker before, and it is very frustrating when you have a voter come in, and I was a poll clerk, so that's even higher up, because they're coming to you to complain. Wait, I drove all the way over here, now you're telling me I have to go to this place now to vote for that person?
Okay, so it's not the supervisor of elections, it's the poll workers, it's the voters?
No, 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 it's a nightmare for the cost to print the different ballots per district if there's a difference. Yeah.
Don't they print by precinct? Yeah, they do it by precinct.
Right.
And so, for example, I pulled up the, I'm not going to just, I really just want to ask questions to serve.
Sure.
Okay. Now, Mr. Dye, you sent a copy of the statute, and the statute says that the school board can do this if it deems it necessary. Is there a definition for necessary?
I know of no definition of necessary.
Okay. Is there a definition for nice? That it would be nice?
I didn't see that either.
Didn't see that either, okay, all right. If we're trying to match up with the Board of County Commissioners, I don't know if you all watched the redistricting process, but the county, it became, "Well, I might want to live in this district, so I want this on the map." They took what they're, you know, so I want to ask you guys, both of you, have you, did you follow the county redistricting process?
Did I follow the county redistricting?
All of their meetings, all of their, you know?
No, I've not followed the county redistricting process.
I did somewhat.
Somewhat, okay. Were any of you at Commissioner Bellamy's town hall about what was happening in District 2? You were there?
No, I was not.
Okay, I was, I was, so I just, you know. Has anyone approached the county commission saying, "You guys need to get in line with ours"?
I had a brief conversation that I wanted to bring this up to match to a county commissioner, but it was, this is not a nefarious request.
And I, people may perceive it as being nefarious, okay? Anyway, I don't want to argue it right now. The numbers, have, do we have the population numbers? Have the numbers changed? No, today, that was two years ago. Have they changed significantly?
I don't.
And where? And what are those numbers?
And I guess, Mr. Renaldi, did you get these numbers from?
The numbers we're looking at on the blue chart came from the county, from the 2020 census. No, we did not go out to find out if anyone has recalculated since.
Okay, so those are the same numbers that we used?
Yes.
To do our districting?
For the 2020, yes.
Okay, all right. Are there any errors in our maps that we submitted to, you know, because we have certain requirements, population, equalization, no discrimination? Do we have any errors that we're aware of in the maps that we created in December of
None have been brought to my attention.
Mr. Dye, do you have any, we don't have any errors in what we did in 2021?
I'm not aware of anything.
Have you all considered that there's going to be an amendment on the ballot in 2024 to make elections for school board partisan, if it passes? Would that make any difference to you all in your perception?
Again, this is not a partisan, not partisan thing, this is a, I'm so sorry, this is, it's for the voters.
Okay.
It's for the supervisor of elections, and it's just a boundary line to match. It matched, as Mr. Dye said before, until the redistricting with the new census.
Okay, I'm going to say a few things here. First of all, the county's maps compared to ours and their process are, while they are close, they're, the process was night and day, theirs was very political. They had hired a consultant and then threw it away, and I believe their political consultant is the one who has been accredited with drawing those maps. So I, you know, that is a public perception. The voters going into the polls, you've got a whole lot more voters who are going to be looking at this going, "What are they thinking?", as opposed to the few that walked into, there are 19 precincts that get moved around, okay? Just, that's, and the voters in those... I'm looking at what would have happened, because I did do the analysis, what would have happened in 2022 had the maps changed, and it wouldn't have made any difference. I look at it now and go, "Why do it now?", and the only difference it would make would be for 2024 is possibly open up a seat somewhere, that, someone might look at it and go, "Oh, now I'm in District 1, now I'm in District 3." I'm sorry, what are you?
Seat?
Are you 1? You're 1, okay, all right. And throw their hat in the ring. And if that happens, you all are going to be accused of gerrymandering, of changing it in order for your, these people to come forward. So I'm just throwing, you know, this is, this is political, okay? Secondly, the maps where the schools are, Mr. Tatum, you're going to have three high schools.
He's going to have three regardless, though, even if we stay in our old district.
Okay, but I'm saying, but the point is, is that, and Ms. Bray, you're going to have two, and I'm going to lose one. And I hate, I hate that I say this, I keep going to, "I've got, you've got..." These are all of our schools, these are all of... got, you've got, these are all of our schools, these are all of our kids. And the fact that we, and throw this on you, Ms. Messenger, that you all changed it to single member voting, single member district voting.
I voted against it.
Oh, it's just, when I got on, because I got elected by the whole county, okay? And I had a whole lot more votes than you guys combined. Stay out of it. But when I came on, it was, I felt that all of these schools, all of these districts were mine, that that's what I was elected to do, to represent them, okay? It has evolved to where I go, oh, this one's my district. I'm gonna go to this school and go talk to these people. I'm gonna go to their SAC. And I, you know, that's, it's wrong of me, but I do that, and it's natural, I think. You know, I've heard us all say, this is my district, you know. So I would prefer, rather than for our discussion to be, do we change borders and boot Mr. Choate out? You know, that's another story.
Not moving.
Because we can't, we can't do it, but we also, so this would not be the year to do it, frankly, because it would change his seat. And we'd have to make an exception suddenly. You've got a, suddenly you've got a different school district map.
Not till he moves.
Okay.
Yes, not till my term is over, correct?
Right. Not till your term is over. He does not have to move now.
Okay. All right.
Three years is a long way.
I forgot my train of thought here. No, the discussion we should be having is whether to go back to the voters and say, let's get rid of the single member districts and go countywide.
Well, I do want to caution us. That's not what was posted. We're talking about.
I know. But I'm saying that that solves a lot of the issues.
I hear you. I hear you.
It solves them all.
I just want to be careful. We're just not going too far into that.
No, no, no. And, but, but if we want to talk about changing things for voter integrity, make it so that every voter in this county can vote for this board, period. The only people who benefit from the single member district are the board members, the people who have to go out and campaign. This is a darn big district and, or darn big county. And to go out and do all five districts, it's a lot of work. It's a lot of money. It's, it's stressful, but I think we get better results than if we limit it to just the people living in that district, because we represent all the kids. So that's my soapbox. I will absolutely not support this. I think, you know, it just, I don't see it being legally necessary. Yeah, it'd be nice, but nice is not defined either. But I think necessary carries about a larger connotation. So this is not necessary. And it creates a lot of political angst in our, in our county.
We've heard from Ms. Spray. Ms. Messenger?
Mrs. Foreman just said just about everything I was going to say, just a lot nicer than I was gonna say it. So thank you for that. Everyone else sitting up here should thank you for that as well. I just want to point out a couple things. When you look at the map that the school board created, the deviation for that map is only four percent. So our deviation for our map is less than the county's map, meaning we are more balanced than the county's map. So this move would actually be going contrary to what Mr. Dye has pointed out, that the reason you would move to a new map is to rebalance. This would actually be making it less balanced, because our highest deviation is four percent. And our four percent is in, is, that deviation is in district four versus their deviation, their highest deviations in district two. But our deviation is less. So we would be making it less balanced. I don't believe that that would adhere to the law that he just stated because of that fact alone. I do want to talk a minute about the process. I'm not sure, and this is a question I have, did you watch the process that the school board went into making these maps?
I took him.
Both of you, since you guys brought it forward. Did you watch the, the school board make?
Yes, I did.
The maps?
Yes, I did.
Did you go to all of the meetings? Because it was over several different meetings. You watched all of them?
They were aired.
They were. Yes. Yeah.
I don't know that I watched any of them.
Okay. The nice thing about what we did was that it was all aired. You can go back and watch all of them. Every line that we moved, we did it in this room. Every single one. It wasn't hidden. Nobody walked in saying, hey, this is the new one. We did it in this room. If somebody came with ideas, we talked about every single piece of it in this room with the camera on, so everyone could see exactly what was happening. There were people that watched those meetings and in real time would email us or contact us. And in real time, we would make those changes while they were watching, so they could say, oh, look, that's how it would change this, or how it would change this. We had multiple meetings where it was done publicly by us, with the sole purpose of making sure it was balanced, but kept the integrity of the districts as they were. It is true that for the past ten years, our maps have aligned. But prior to that, they didn't. The school board did have different lines in the county commission, and that changed, I believe, in 2012. So while it has been common for the last ten years, it has not always been that way. I agree that it would be nice if the maps were the same. And if you watched those meetings, you heard me say that lots of times. That's all I wanted. I wanted it to be the same for the exact same reason that you stated. I think it's easier for the voters. I agree with that statement. Unfortunately, what we saw was maps that were made in secret and then brought in, and then exactly how she, Mrs. Foreman, has stated, oh, but I want to live over here. Let's cut out that piece. That's not to the benefit of the community. None of us did that in this room. So I would have a hard time adopting a map when I watched their process and I know ours. And ours was transparent. It was honest. It was fair. It wasn't politically driven. I would have a hard time adopting a map that was all of the things that I abhor about politics. I really want to point out how much I appreciate this map. This is my new favorite map of all time. That might change a few minutes. I apologize. But right now, this is my favorite. Because this one shows you all of the people whose votes you're gonna usurp by changing the district lines again. This one shows you, if they moved once already, and you moved them again, they may not get to vote again. Because if they were moved in 2021 and their vote was changed then, because we redistricted and rebalanced with a deviation of only a four percent, and you moved them again, you could be usurping their vote for another two years. Thereby, they might have not been able to vote for four or six years because of changing the lines once again. We carefully tried to move it as little as we could, so that we didn't do that to people. Changing this would, once again, do that to people, and dramatically, probably to some of them. I don't even want to get into the thing about Mr. Choate, but I will say that if I were Mr. Choate, I would not want to sit here not living in my district, even if that were allowed. And I wouldn't want to be the reason why this little cutout happened. I wouldn't want any of that. So I really feel bad that he's even in this position. I don't feel like this is at all fair to him. I wouldn't want to sit here going, oh, well, I guess I can move or have to run in a different district. And it's just wholly unfair to him, even to give him the cutout. That's wholly unfair, because then you're still not doing what you said you wanted to do, which was align them. If the county commission would like to align to ours, they are more than welcome to take our map. Our map is actually more balanced than theirs. It was not made in some back room. They can watch all of our meetings as well. And I welcome them to do that. But I cannot get behind deviating from the process that I know was done in a very transparent and fair manner and get behind one that I know wasn't. Thank you.
Thank you. So I guess I'll be the tiebreaker here. I think that, thank you for saying stuff about me. I think that it's, I think it's bigger than me. This is not about one person up here, in my personal opinion. I do think our process was pretty good. If you go back, I actually voted no on it. I came in and destroyed everything, and my map was way different than everybody else's, based on, and I'm looking at the maps here, based on high schools, and based on, because of the way the voting is, to be held accountable in your district. Although, I just want to misform it about this, and not because I don't want to go too deep in that topic. But I do agree that limiting from a, we should be worrying about the whole county and not just one district. And so, this is, this is why we're in this seat. Two people are gonna be upset, two people are gonna be happy. I lean towards going to the county, because we would have done that anyways if the county would have done it faster, in my personal opinion. If we would have, if they didn't wait and slow down, we would have gone with them anyways. I truly believe that if they'd have been done in November, we would have gone with them. I don't think we would have gone through our whole process. We didn't want to hire anybody to do it, which I think is, was a smart move to not spend all that money. But we would have gone with the county if there wasn't the delay of them putting stuff together. I'm not gonna sit here and say they were, they did certain things wrong, right, whatever, because I don't know what was going on. To be honest with you, I didn't really pay too much attention. I went to some of their meetings, watched some of them, but I didn't pay too much attention to it. So I'm not gonna say it was charged politically this way, that way. I do think, for the voters, overall, it is better to have the districts aligned all together, the county, and the school board. To a point of, and again, I say this because, yeah, we're not supposed to represent theoretically one district, but there are things that you could do with commissioners for particular schools, et cetera. I believe that we could do things that, but then they should be doing the whole county, too. I mean, to be honest with you, I think districts are ridiculous to have to begin with. But I do understand you got to separate people out, so it's not just from one area of the town or the community. I'd be in favor of following the county, just to be honest with you, to make it simpler. I can't give a direct examples of where I stood at the polls, but I had several people that told me, wait a minute, I can't vote for you, because I thought I was in district, you know, four, district two, whatever. I think going countywide, that's the solution. There's no, there's no other solution other than make our vote county. I wasn't here when that came about. I know we're not talking about that today. But I think that should be talked about, to be quite honest with you. But I'm in favor of going to, to follow the county. Again, this is bigger than just me. And what my future holds in two years, I mean, you know, 2026, when the next election is for district four. So I'm, again, this is bigger than me. I don't see anywhere in here that two, four, and six, who are just like, I just, I don't, or two, four, and five, that's a whole nother thing. Why are we, why do we have five not with the other odds? One, three, and five does not go with the odds, and two and four, that's a whole nother question that I don't know if anybody really knows, district wise. You know, the county's one, three, five, seven. Why aren't we one, three, and five? Why are we two, four, five? Does that make sense? Odds and even numbers of districts?
Well, they have two.
I mean, do they have odds? My point is, why are odd districts not with each other, clumped together?
Oh.
You mean during election?
Yeah, during election time. Isn't that weird? Anyway, and that's neither here or there. We didn't do that up here. So I don't know how that was chosen. But I'm for following, following the county, strictly on the fact, I think it's easier for the voters. It's easier for, for, I believe, the supervisor elections, people to know where you're at, who you're with. I, there was definitely confusion on the part of changing the districts. There was definitely a lot of confusion of people that I know that couldn't vote for me, because they didn't live in district four. So I know we're not talking about that today, but I believe that is something that we should, and would gladly discuss at a different time. So my, my only question, I would, I would make sure to, for Mr. Dye's point, we obviously cannot draw a school, a school member out, but you can complete your term, and then you got to decide. Do you stay in the district you're in, or do you move to another district that you're actually supporting in? So, and again, this is bigger, this is not about me. This is bigger than me. This is, this is not about one person sitting here. I don't want to make it about me. I do believe holistically that following the county is the best way. And I think we would have done that if they would have, if they would have stayed, and if they would have had it longer or quicker process. We had the same meeting on the day that they did. So who's to say if they had it the week before, we actually had their maps, that we would have said, okay, we can get behind them. Let's follow them. And so, those are all what ifs. I don't know that answer. But I would be, I would be willing to say, yes, let's follow the county districts. So.
If I could.
You may.
During this next cycle for 2024, Ms. Messenger brought up the fact that people may not be able to vote. I'm saying to people publicly all the time, make sure you're registered. Make sure if you're wanting a mail-in ballot, you renew that. Because this cycle, you have to do that. It's not automatic anymore. You have to do that.
But if you move them from one district to another, to again?
There are nineteen districts that are changed.
They're going to lose their opportunity to vote for somebody again.
And I do know, I do know that the supervisor of elections will be sending out new voter ID cards to the people that are affected. I'm almost certain. That's the conversation I have with them.
Right. I, that might be great that he does that. But if they were supposed to vote in 2022, and their district lines got moved, and they got moved now to a vote that would now be into a different district, whose vote would now be in 2024, and now you're moving their lines again, then they will not be able to vote until 2026. So it doesn't matter what day he sends out the cards. They are now going to lose out on another chance to vote for a school board member. It is usurping their vote. That was my point.
May I give an example? Okay. Precinct 423, okay, which would be Mike Ron's district or commissioner. If we do not make the changes, precinct 423 will be on the ballot for district three. In other words, if I run again, it would, my name would be the one on that ballot. If you change it to district, to, if you change these lines, the people in 423, which by the way, is El Conquistador, they're not gonna have an opportunity to vote for a school board member, because that election took place two years ago, when Mr. Choate was voted on. I'm sorry, he?
Last year.
Yeah.
Well, for you, for you.
Right, right. But, but they, they will not have a chance to vote again until 2026. They will have no school board member on their ballots in 2020. They will have no school board member on their ballots in four, in, in twenty twenty-four. So it's not a matter of, do they have a ballot? Do they, um, do they have a voter card? It, it is a, it is a matter of what precinct they're in. Not district precinct, so, um.
Mr. Die, oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, okay, just from my experiences being, working at the polls and all of that. We have people that move in from out of state all the time. We have people that change our addresses all the time. They get registered to vote right then and there. So to say that they're not able to vote in twenty twenty-four for the school board cycle, I don't think is.
It, it's not about them being registered to vote or not. It, it's, it's about the year that the election is happening, so next year in twenty twenty-four, the precinct that, that Ms. Foreman is talking about voted last time, four years ago in twenty twenty.
I see, I see.
They didn't vote in twenty twenty-two when, when I ran in district four and now my, I would be moving into district four, so they would be not waiting until twenty twenty-six. All that to say, it wouldn't matter if we could do the county vote, but, um, but that, that's what she's, that's what she's saying. So, which, but to your point too, people move out of inside and outside of districts all the time within the county as you buy and sell homes, et cetera, so, um, again, this, there's not going to be a perfect scenario, um. Uh, is there anybody else that wants to say anything else?
I don't think.
Been discussed?
Any more discussion is going to change anybody?
I don't, I don't think so either, I don't think so either.
I kind of know.
Okay.
Okay. When, when the political heat starts, I'm sending it your way, I can't support this, I know we're supposed to support what the board does. If I, phone calls I get, I'm going to say, call Mr. Tatum and Ms. Bray.
You send it my way too, that's fine.
Yeah, great.
Well, I'll discuss it. Ms. Rinaldi, thank you very much for your efforts.
Appreciate it.
Um, moving to item number two, as he gets the room cleared, um, is a board discussion on community use of school district sites after hours. Um, you know, I know, I believe the thought process is just, how do we potentially open up? Especially, you know, uh, uh, we've had some public comments about it, I know I've been reached out to the community, Mr. Tatum, I think you asked to put this on the, on the actual, um, uh, workshop and really just, I, and I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, I think it's a discussion on, hey, how do we potentially open up ballfields and courts and basketball courts?
Tennis courts.
Tennis courts, et cetera, to potentially for the public to use and, and still make sure we're doing things statutorily that we have to do to protect, you know, the schools, et cetera. Um, and so I guess, I, I would say, let's start with Dr. Weisong maybe first, see, kind of go, because I know that we all may have our opinions and thoughts, I would like to hear from, from the district perspective first, and that may change some thoughts and stuff from up here, so. Your, yours, Dr. Weisong.
Good morning, chairman and board members. Um, we, uh, as a team have talked about this topic since it did come up in, um, public comment. And, um, Mr. Rinaldi will, um, talk in terms of some of the facilities impacts, but I also want to note that uh, Mr. Clark, uh, and a number of our, um, principals and athletic directors are here just to answer any questions you have, but also to help you identify, um, potential impacts that we would need to work through, um, as part of a, a, a program to take this type of step. I know that, um, it seems like a very simple, everybody wins kind of concept, but there are a lot of logistics to consider. Uh, and, um, uh, some potential costs, um, that arise, um, when you start talking through implementation details. So I wanted to make some, uh, um, uh, some of our great administrators available, um, to you to answer your questions and help you work through this. So, Mr. Rinaldi?
Good, good morning again. Um, we, we, uh, in cabinet did some brainstorming and then I sat down with, uh, uh, Mr. D'Amico, we talked a little bit about security and safety. Um, have discussed with some of the principals and I did a little bit of an assessment too on some of the investments that we've made at the high school levels too. Uh, the primary, um, concerns that came up was potential maintenance cost. I mean, we're kind of fighting on a daily basis on our playgrounds with our playground equipment, with our open fields, just to keep the maintenance up on those. And if we were to open them up, uh, to the public, uh, during off hours, that would just, uh, basically increase maintenance cost, uh, the failure of equipment. And, uh, you know, the possibility of not allowing our students to use it if something would happen to a piece of equipment or to a field as well. Um, one of, we actually tried this in my former district and one of the issues that we found was that there was a increase in staff time, especially with PE teachers and, uh, that unfortunate first group of students that go out for recess, that there was a fair amount of policing that needed to be done. Uh, and we actually found everything from some medical waste, syringes and needles, um, pet waste uh, as well as just standard trash and, you know, the items that would be left, you know, left back from a picnic or from a use of the basketball court, uh, during that process as well, so we did see that occur. Um, from a liability standpoint, uh, right now, we, uh, you know, use our Facilitron process. If a group comes on site, uh, they're required to hold, um, insurance, uh, to, to make sure that if we have an accident or if something happens on that site, uh, that there, it's in, they're the insured party and that it, that liability does not slip to the district. So that was the other, um, it would be difficult to try to get waivers, uh, you know, if you're going to walk through the fence there, you need to sign this waiver, I mean, so we wouldn't be able to get any, any waivers. Um, from the standpoint of Mr. D'Amico, he, he's concerned about crime. I mean, because they are basically unsupervised spaces at that point. And we've already had one instance where, uh, we allowed parking to occur on one of our properties and we had a crime as a result of that. So, uh, crime is an issue as well. Uh, additional staff cost, if we're going to go after hours and look at, um, weekend use as well, then we need to identify staff that would open it up, would close it at dusk, very similar to what, uh, they do in the recreational departments with, with the county and the cities as well. And we really don't have that staff infrastructure in place right now. Um, in, in addition to that, we do, the Facilitron is a big piece and we do have youth football, we have youth baseball that uses a lot of those facilities and if a, uh, public member comes on and doesn't honor those Facilitron contracts which we have in place, then that could become a, a bone of contention between the two of those groups and, uh, it could hap, and it could hurt our Facilitron process as well. In regards to looking at the high schools, we're getting ready with the, the turf projects, probably a little bit under ten million dollars uh, investment in those turf products for the, the seven schools that we have going on right now. In addition to that, we've put a little bit over five million over the past three years into, uh, the synthetic tracks, the rubber tracks as well. So, uh, that, that is a significant investment, obviously, that, that we use. Uh, they are competition level, uh, events that we have out there and, and improvement. So, I mean, the current concern from the standpoint is we, we've made that investment and that we may see a significant deterioration of those items as a result of this as well. One of the things I'd like to share with you is that we have been talking with the county and we have been, uh, discussing MOUs for their use of some, uh, generalized fields, uh, for some camps and things like that. Um, and we could discuss with them, uh, doing, uh, teen-related events or teen-related programs as well as adult-related programs as well. And what's nice with that, then we, we're insured, um, we, we've got someone that will open the gate, close the gate, someone that will police the grounds after use as well and take care of some of those custodial concerns as well. So, uh, we're, we're working through all of our MOUs with the county right now, but, uh, they recently submitted to us a list of campuses where they would like to discuss the use of the generalized fields as well, so. That, those were during our brainstorming and I don't know if my principals wish to add anything else, but, um, but they're available for comment as well.
I may have some questions or anything like that. Uh, anything from, do you, Mr. Dr. Weisong, to add to anything that was said there?
We'll, we'll, we'll look forward to hearing the discussion and answering any questions.
Okay. Um.
Could we hear from the principals? Get their?
Yeah, I mean, if they, I don't know if they've got anything prepared, I, I know I talked to a couple of y'all before, I mean, if you don't have anything prepared, um, by all means, we may have questions for, you know, if you give a specific question. Okay, I think there may be some questions as we walk through that we can definitely ask them. Um, because I, I mean, I do think that, uh, obviously that, whether it be high school, middle school, elementary, it's going to fall back to the principal and, and that's the, the, who's in charge of that site, and I think that, that, that is obviously kind of where you're going, is what you kind of want to hear, what, what their thoughts are. Um, you want to just ask them point blank, your question, a question?
Yeah, I just show hands, do you agree that with, yep. Do, I don't know, if, do you have a differing opinion from what Mr. Rinaldi expressed?
Let's put them on the phone.
Yeah.
I guess, I guess, I guess with anybody, would, would anybody like to just talk about, uh, from your guys' standpoint? What does it take to like rent a facility? How do you guys, because I, we don't, we probably don't know that, you know, once you do the Facilitron, that's great. Hey, we filled out the Facilitron, I'm coming October tenth through the twelfth to use the gym or to use the football field or whatever. But from a school-based standpoint, what do you want to do to prepare for those events where a little league or somebody's coming in and renting the field?
Well, good morning.
Morning.
Thanks for, thanks for having us here today, uh, Dr. Weisong, uh, members of the board. Um, just speaking on behalf and if they want to come up and say some things. Renting our facilities is certainly a great opportunity. Um, we have a number of different, uh, entities that reach out. But what happens on a high school campus? It is, it never ceases to have activity and it can be pretty much Monday through Saturday. The only time we don't have something right now at the school is Sundays. And that's going to probably change, you know, I can speak for Lakewood Ranch High School. Uh, we do have a church that's probably going to come in and rent our facility, uh, on Sundays now. And so that, that usage, you know, if someone, if we open it up to the public, say on a Saturday morning and we had a football game on a Friday night and the coach feels that on Saturday, after we have a film session that we want to go out and walk, you know, through a, through a potential practice, but we have an, an, an open facility at that point, it may limit our ability then to go out to, to utilize that, that facility. I agree with, uh, with Mr. Rinaldi in terms of security. I mean, every, everything we always talk, we, we talk about right now is safety is first and foremost. Are we going to, if we open it up, does that, do, how do, what does that look like? Those, those are, you know, kind of our questions and concerns. You know, is any, is it just for adults, is it going to be students? How are we going to supervise? Are we going to require law enforcement? It's significant costs on our, on our Friday nights and I'm, I'm sure you guys see that. You know, our sheriff's deputies, and we hire five or six for every, every football game and some of those guys are, you know, ninety bucks an hour in terms, and those are five, six, seven hours that we employ them. So it's a, uh, it's a pretty significant cost. So, and then also the concern, you know, if we're opening our courts, um, you know, who gets into the building, how do they get into the building, when do we open it? Um, if someone breaks a rim, you know, how long is, is that going to take? Is that going to then take away from our students, you know, at the school? Now, we certainly are very thankful for the investment that you all as a board have made in, into our facilities. And we understand, you know, that there is a need publicly for, you know, people in the community to, to have access to facilities. I think we're pretty fortunate out at Lakewood Ranch and, and that community for, to have the huge space that we do and that, I think that was pretty much the generosity of the board back in the late nineties, um, to, to work with the county on, on opening that. I think we're, we're in favor of, of being a, a good neighbor to everyone in our community. I don't think any of us don't want that, but there are significant concerns and costs potentially associated with that to our facilities and potentially, uh, to, to our educational program. If we do send out some kids out to the playground, what if they, what if they find the needle first? What if, what if they get into something, um, or somebody plants something or does something on our facility? And then, you know, potentially some of our students, you know, may, may encounter something, you know, negative, so. That's, does anyone have any, any kind of specific, anything specific question that you would have for them?
No.
Just some general comments.
I have, I have a question. Um, have you ever rented out to a church?
Yes, when I was at Buffalo Creek Men's.
Okay, hopefully it's a better crowd of people, you know, you won't have needles come Monday morning.
Oh, we never, no. We rented to Bayside Church, it was.
Okay.
It was a fantastic partnership.
And no, and, and I did attend, uh, a church about, that met at Ballard Elementary. Um, how were things on Monday morning? Because the, their Sunday schools use the classrooms that you, that you allow them to use. So a teacher can come in Monday morning and find who knows what, you know, just things messed with. And did that happen?
No, that never happened, um, they would put curtains up, but there was a process, you know, there's a process for that. They rented the facility, they, um, there were certain agreements that we had with, with the church as to what they could use, what they couldn't use. But it wasn't an open, it wasn't, the entire campus was not open to them, it was specific classrooms, it was, it was the cafeteria, it was those things.
So it worked out okay then?
It worked out fantastic and we still have that process in place. It's just, it's just not an open facility, we just don't open the door and then, you know, for those who want to play.
I, I don't, I don't think that it's any, I know it's not my intention whatsoever to open up campuses like full, here you go. Especially the schools, the schools itself. Um, for me, it's, it's more so, um, and, and we, we've talked, I've talked about this with many people and I feel like I'm getting old because I remember my grandparents always say, back in the day, but that's kind of what I want, that's, that, back in the day, we rode our bikes to the elementary schools and King and Palmolino and Stewart and played basketball, played football, played whatever we wanted, it was just, it was wide open, right? Um, and we just don't get that anymore, but at the same token, I don't think our kids are geared that way anymore. We're all kind of drawn towards, um, leagues and things like that. So I, I don't think it's a concern of of the actual like buildings, et cetera. My concern for it and, and, and just as a comment, just in general, is I think we could, we could potentially be strategic with the county, like we have been with King Middle School with that extra area. And we did a MOU with them to be able, they're, they're taking the rest of that, right? Um, and, and they're going to, they're going to manage that, um, and figure that out. I think with Lakewood Ranch, we've got that huge, the county's had a huge amount of pickleball courts, racquetball, all that, so I don't think that specifically. But I look at target areas like, um, the central corridor of our schools, right? So from, from central Bradenton, south central Bradenton, from university kind of up the corridor, up through Palmetto, where there is maybe no parks, right? Um, you know, you're too far away from GT Bray, now, now Marble or, um.
Marble, yeah.
Is it Marble? That they're redoing? Right now? Um, and so I, I see that being constructed, so that at least maybe helps the central area. But I would like for it to almost be like strategically planned, not like a wide open, every school, everything's open. Because you, you look at places like, I, I'll say Braden River, like you're going to have to open up. Like, you're gonna have to open up the entire campus for them to get back to the tennis courts and the basketball courts back in the back, right? So, but you look at a, at a, at a place like Miller Elementary, where those tennis courts are in the front on, on Ninth, that you could just open up the tennis court now they can't get anywhere else. I think we're strategic about it. But at the same time, though, if you're gonna open up Miller's Courts and GT Bray is less than a mile away, is the county gonna say, wait a minute, you're taking our clients here? Because you gotta go join the racket club to get on the tennis courts? So I don't know if they're gonna, are they gonna say, whoa, timeout? Why you open that? You know what I mean? So I guess that's some of, that's some of my thoughts. If anybody else, well, Mr. Weisong, go ahead, I know you're at King.
Well, I mean, we have had basketball coming in. Manatee County comes in afternoon. You know, I'm wrapping up buses at six o'clock or five thirty, and, and the kids are standing out front waiting to get into the campus. Somebody has to let them in. We've got to bar that door, man that door. I've walked onto my campus after the last bus leaves, and I see somebody walking a dog in my courtyard, and, which I love dogs. But, you know, there's, we can't have dog waste in the courtyard. And, and that's a challenge. And my custodian come to me the next day, he says, I found a dirty diaper on the table where our kids are eating lunch. You know, our Renaissance kids that go out after, or after earning As and Bs, there's a dirty diaper on there. So, you know, and the tennis courts too. We have had broken bottles and beer bottles and beer cans, and, and that's a county thing that we, we do have a, an interlocal with them, and it's been pretty good. You know, I think Mr. Rinaldi and, and Mr. Dahlclass has pretty much said it all. You know, we've all been to middle schools, high schools throughout this campus throughout our careers, and, and pretty much all of us grew up in these programs and played ourselves. But it's a different time. You know, there's a lot of safety concerns. You know, I don't want to step on a, I don't want to have my girls and my boys stepping on glass or picking up anything, or I found vape pens that are out on the back forty, you know, from the weekend. Kids jumping the fence, you know, that's, that's not the fault of, of community programs, but I've also found them over at the tennis court. So there's a lot of, a lot of things going on. You know, we want to support our children. We want to support everything that they do to become better citizens, better athletes, better students. So, you know, there's just some obstacles in the way, and we want, we just want to make sure everybody stays safe.
Ms. Ray?
Thank you all for being here. Coming from a tennis history, I ran the biggest tournament in our community at our high school because it had all the courts. I'm talking juniors to the adults, mixed, singles, all of it. And we were so grateful. We even, my husband and I painted the backboard and so we could have a, it was needed painted, and that was our give back. Thank you for letting us use your court. We're gonna paint your backboard. They had to paint their logo back on, but that was our return. So, and I would not be in favor of people using our football fields with this new turf. We have put a big investment in that, and I can't, I wouldn't be supportive of the community tearing that up. I would say to the county, build some more football fields for kids to have access or even adults that want to play. Or work with each one of you to plan any of that. But to me, I, that's a huge investment. Baseball fields and that kind of thing that is separate from like at Palmetto, that fields over to the side. So I could see, yeah, we could probably do something there. But I see if there's an adult tennis league, I'd have to go to that. And we could work with you. I know Johnson, I didn't know Johnson had tennis courts till I took the tour. I didn't, had no clue there was courts back there. And, and my husband always maintained the tennis court nets at the schools. All of ours, both schools that had courts, the park in the school. So there is that trade-off. But I would see it would have to be a coordinated effort with the community that wanted to use our facilities. But I would not be in favor of kids using all of our park equipment at Liberty. I do know that at Samo Set, kids jumped the fence, and that's not safe in my opinion. So we probably ought to look at something there. So, but I do believe that there is opportunity for the community to use some of our facilities, but not so much all. I just wouldn't do a whole blanket thing at all.
Yeah, Ms. Smith?
I don't know, I don't remember the exact timing, but within the last couple of years, we had an interlocal agreement with the city of Bradenton to make one of our playgrounds a park for the city of Bradenton in a, in the central corridor area. And we ended up having to end that. For a lot of the reasons that were stated, employees would go out there in the morning and find a lot of things that you would not want an elementary student to be exposed to. So that would be my biggest concern as a parent thinking about, like, I wouldn't want that for my daughter to go out there and go, oh, look what I found. I mean, no thanks. You mentioned the baseball fields and the, and, and the amount of investment we make in the football fields, but we pay two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain our clay fields. So we, we pay to maintain all of those things. And to be clear, the use of the facilities is already allowed. The community can already use any of the facilities as long as they go through the process. They have to go through the process to make sure that they have the insurance, that they work with the, the school, so that there's somebody there to make sure that it's, it's in a safe, you know, safely done. But we already have that process. The process of, yeah, you know, the community can use it, done. If the gentleman, and I can only think of the one person that has come before us, this gentleman came before us and he wants to go play basketball, he can get a group of basketball people and go play there. They just have to work out a facility use agreement with the district. They can do that already. To open it up to whomever, I don't believe that's our job personally. Like, that's just, this is just not our job. That, that's a county and city job. Parks, not our job. I am totally fine with the facility agreements. I'm okay with coming up interlocals with the county or the city, because then we have our bases covered with liability, with safety, security, with, with staff and all the other necessary pieces. If we do it in that way, I can support that, and we have that. That is perfectly okay. To open it up in any other manner, I think would be to the detriment of our students. For a lot of the reasons that have already been stated, you don't know what the fields will look like when they show up the next day to do an activity. You don't know what you're gonna find. So then the manpower of cleaning up the next day is, is, is taking away from the students at school. You don't know what's gonna be broken and how long it's gonna take to fix it. And we're paying for that, and that is also to the detriment of students. Whereas if we go through the way that we already have, we already have that responsibility clearly set. We already have the guidelines clearly set. We already know that they have insurance lined up so that if somebody, if somebody were to have an accident or something, we, we know that we have those pieces all put in place legally. To open it up would be putting the board in a situation where you will be dealing with lawsuits. You will, because of people getting injured and then suing, because we will now be liable, we opened it up. And, like I said, to the detriment of students. So I, I can't support doing that. I don't think that's our job. I think the county and the city, if that is a need, they can create more parks. Or they can work out an interlocal agreement with the school district in which they ensure that it is clean and safe. I'm okay with the interlocals, I'm okay with the agreements. I just, opening it up, I agree with you, though. I mean, I remember going to Palmasola when I was a kid and going to play on the playground, and it wasn't that far a walk from my house. I totally understand what your point is. But I also agree with you, we're not there now. That's just not where we are anymore. It's just, I, I wish it was. Gosh, that would be a nice place to be, but we're not. We have a huge amount of drug use in Manatee County, and if you were gonna open up more places for it to happen, then that means more students are gonna get exposed to it. So I just can't see deviating from the process that we already have, which still allows the community to use it, but has a regimented process that I think is better for our students and for our facilities. So.
Yeah.
I just, we are truly fortunate in this community to have the equipment, the, the, the facilities that we have. I used to, when my children were young, we lived in Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, and I remember going to the park in our neighborhood to play. And the school next door had to use that playground equipment, and they chased us off. I got thrown out of a playground. I'm just, you know. The point is that we, we have, I have, I'm truly, yeah, I'm bitter. But we have invested taxpayer dollars into facilities so that our students don't have to go next door to the park or in the middle of the school day to use, to use that. So, and that is our priorities, our students, that is, you know, our taxpayers, I get it. You know, the taxpayers paid for this, why can't they use it? And the point is, is that the taxpayers paid for parks and recreation, and that's where they should be, should be using it, unless there's an agreement. For the Miller tennis courts, I had talked to the, when I talked to the principal there and because I guess there was some kind of an agreement where the county was going to be using it, and they were finding that the, that the gates were locked. And that was at the time of COVID, when custodians were really hard to come by. And for, they had to tell their custodian, you need to go out there and unlock the gate and then lock it up again. And it was a problem, you know, and, and I think it's just an additional burden on our custodial staff, even if the county's coming in and cleaning up. So it just, we, we do need to work them out and work them out strategically. I mean, there, there are courts at, at Miller, but there are also courts, like you said, a mile away at Bray. So, so I'm, I'm all for doing it strategically, full agreements, and taking into account what it, what happens with our staff, what happens with our property, and absolutely our safety.
You want to say, you want to?
Well, it was my item. I just, a couple, whenever that gentleman came up a couple of months ago, I don't know if that's the gentleman you're referring to. He made a point about, and I, I don't know if Ms. Diego Stino is prepared to answer this question or not. He made a point about Title I schools, there's some legal requirement that they have to be open to, you know, the public to use or something like that. But I had never heard of it, and I think, so that just sparked, sparked my interest, and I thought maybe we could have a discussion about all this. I'm not in favor either way of opening them or not opening them. I just wanted to have a discussion and understand what the pros and the cons are. And I kind of agree with this idea of strategic, strategic. And when it makes sense, and, and with safety and security and where it's located, if, if it makes sense with the county, let's do it. But unfortunately, like you said, sir, we're in a different time. You know, I can remember before nine eleven, when you walked up to your child's school and you just walked in the door. And you just walked in the door. And, and that's just not where we are anymore in our society. So, yeah, strategically making these agreements where it makes sense, makes sense to me, and I just wanted to have a discussion about it. And then the interest was sparked by the gentleman who talked, because he, he does have a point, whether there's a legal requirement or not for Title I schools, which seemed odd, but I remember him saying that, I took a note, that was interesting to me. Those, those areas are part poor, you, you might say, you know, there are, whereas you go out to Lakewood Ranch, there is a big, huge park out there right by the school. And I too can remember going shooting baskets at the high school, you know, when I was a kid, but times have changed. So, yeah, strategically, having agreements is where I think we should be.
Mr. Clark? Like you said, we do have a process for it, you know, working with Mr. Rinaldi and a couple of ADs have sat in and on it. We're talking about those interlocal agreements. And we have the Facilitron, as has been stated. So there is a process for the, the public to use our facilities. We just have to manage it, and that's what we do. But we are open to working with the community.
Yeah. I, I think that, well, even, Mr. Dr. Weisong, you talked about the church, right, coming in this, and so I think that let's, let's, let's have the, some reality of where we're at in public education right now, okay? We want to have as much support from our community as possible because they have choices to go their places, which I agree with. They should have choices to go to other places. So we want to make sure that we're, you know, a place where when they feel like, hey, I'm coming to church here, man, this would be a really nice place for my kids to come and have an education too. I've heard good things about it. They've got a great swimming program, and my daughter's a swimmer, whatever, right? So, so having that community, you know, coming in and seeing our facilities, I think is a good thing. It does have to be done right, though. It does have to be done with some accountability to somebody if you do mess something up, if a rim is broken or something like that, where now our own kids can't use it on a Monday, PE, it's basketball, you know, section, and I can't go use a basketball hoop because it's broken. You know, obviously, that makes complete sense. I would like to, to just make sure that we are willing, and I think we are, I'm not, I'm not saying we're not. I just want to make sure we continue to be willing to host those things in our facilities, bring the community there. If, if the county says, hey, you know, I, I think what we did with, at King is a very good, and, and I mean, I don't, I don't want to put you on the spot to disagree or, or don't, because you're there every day. But I, I feel like that is, that is a place where we could potentially do more things like that strategically. I don't think we open up the floodgates and say all of our, everything's open, courts, blah, 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 go have at it. I don't think that's the right way. But I do think if we could strategically with the county say, hey, there's no real park access in this point. I mean, go look at like maybe Palmetto Elementary, right? I don't know what's, from there, it's neat, I, like, I don't know what park is really there. So maybe, you know, and I don't even know Palma, I don't think Palmetto has, Elementary has tennis courts or anything. I don't, I'm not even sure, because maybe they share the field too, and why I'm saying, as long as we're open to those things, I think that's important.
Yes, sir, we are. We have an actual partnership with the county, right? We use their baseball field for Manatee High and softball. Same thing with Lakewood Ranch, and then Palmetto High uses the softball field with the county as well. So that's, those interlocal agreements go both ways. So we're, we'll continue working with them, and we're in a process, as Mr. Rinaldi said, looking at some other sites for some different things, middle schools, other middle schools, what have you. But it'll be a partnership.
Cool.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you all very much. Board members, nobody, anything else on that topic? All right, we're an hour and twenty-three. Did you have anything?
Yeah.
I just want to, yeah, yeah. There is a relevant statute, section one thousand and thirteen point one zero, use of buildings and grounds that authorizes the board to permit use of educational facilities and grounds for any legal assembly or for community use centers, or may permit the same to be used for voting places. And the board has to adopt reasonable rules relative to that. And your policy is policy number seven five one zero, which allows the district to make grounds and facilities available for community purposes, provided that the use does not infringe upon the original and necessary purpose of the property or interfere, interfere with the educational program, schools. Requests need to be made in writing by a responsible organization or group of citizens that's been approved by the superintendent. He has the authority to, to decide who can and cannot pursuant to your rules. But it does say that grounds or facilities shall not be granted for private social functions or for any purpose prohibited by law. And then there's restrictions regarding liability insurance and accepting liability for damage or loss of equipment, and users being liable financially for the damage and for proper chaperoneage. So I just want to bring that out to your attention.
Thank you. All right, so we're about five minutes early than our hour and a half, but we're gonna go ahead and take a ten-minute recess, and we'll come back for the last topic on mental health. All right, welcome back. After a quick recess, we are going to move to item number three, presentation on, uh, student supports, mental health programming and the Florida resiliency initiatives. Uh, Dr. Breslin, Mr. Jensen, you guys, y'all are on deck, so floor is yours.
Good morning.
Morning.
Wrong color today.
I know.
No, you're not wearing green.
I did not get the green memo today.
I didn't either.
Um, well, thank you for having us. We're happy to be here. We brought, um, many people, as you see, that are involved in supporting, um, our initiatives with mental health programming and the Florida resiliency. Um, and so just to kind of lay the progression of how we, we ended up, um, where we are in this work. Um, back in the twenty twenty-two legislative session, House Bill fifty, fifteen fifty-seven was passed. And that set a deadline, um, to the Florida Department of Education that new school counseling standards needed to be set by July of this school year of twenty twenty-three. Um, so that work has been done. Luckily, we have, um, a sitting expert in the room, Larissa Bennett, who worked with the state on that framework. So that's much to our benefit. Um, from that, um, in March of twenty twenty-three, Lady DeSantis, um, issued a proclamation. It was a, a press release that came out, um, calling for resiliency through community and, um, set the new standards for resiliency to implement in schools. Um, that also came with the announcement of funding. I believe it's twenty-one point three million, um, that the state has provided, um, for resiliency initiatives. Um, that's, money actually flows through the consortium, so it flows through the Manatee Education Foundation. So we've been working with Mary Glass. We are blessed to have a very strong, not every district has such a strong, um, foundation like we do in our area. Um, and so we'll speak as part of this presentation, our work with the Manatee Educa- Education Foundation and applying and receiving, um, a grant successfully, um, to, to bring, um, resiliency, not only for our schools, but it is really for the community. So it speaks to mentoring, it speaks to family engagement, it speaks to, um, training for parents. And so that brings us to where we are today. So what you're going to hear is not only about building resiliency, um, but you're also going to hear about the mental health initiatives and the mental health allocation. And so the team you'll see in the room, um, you'll have, and I have to say thank you, um, to Dr. Weisong and our board members. Um, for the first time, we have a full-time mental health coordinator for the first time in, in a couple of years. And that's Sarah Sanders, who will be up here presenting. And Sarah works with, um, Nikki Cox and also our Associate Director and E S C, Mary Beth Mason. Um, we also have, um, filled for the first time in a long time, a school counselor coordinator, and that's Larissa Bennett. And then in addition to having these seats filled, which is very important, we have them in one umbrella. So under Student Services now is where everybody resides. And so we're able to work together, um, to better support our entire community. Um, so first I'd like to invite, um, Larissa Bennett, um, and then Sarah Sanders will come up and, and, um, they'll go back and forth and then Mary Glass will come up and share. There is quite a bit of information. It's really good information. If you let us go through the presentation, we'll come back and answer any questions you might have at the end.
Good morning, board. Dr. Weisong. I'm going to start with our state initiative. There we go. Sure I get it all up there for you. Uh, so under Casey DeSantis's plan, and I was part of the work that, that supported the building of the standards that you see on this slide here, um, the resiliency initiative really looked at our students' mental health from a, a whole child perspective. So where in the past, mental health initiatives really drove into the mental health state of our students, the resiliency initiative takes mental health from the perspective that it is part of our health, right? We all have mental health and how we manage that looks different for each and every one of us. So resiliency is what our state has determined, is our approach to supporting our students in all of their needs. So on this slide, this is our state, um, directed slide. You'll see we talk about, uh, the resiliency education standards and I'll talk a little bit about that and, and at the end of the presentation. Um, and those standards are our student-facing standards. Those are what we present to our students to teach them those resiliency skills. The rest of this slide, the cogs that you see, if you will, really touch on everything that we do as a district to support our students' resiliency needs. The state has provided a resiliency toolkit, so I'm starting in that dark blue section at the top. That resiliency toolkit has lessons and activities and strategies that can support the work that we're doing in the district. There's a specific youth survey. In the past, we did a, the C D C, um, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. Our state has now, a work group worked last year to create our own specific survey. We were not one of the districts that were chosen to pilot that, so we're waiting to see what the next steps are for that survey. So the last three, uh, cogs, if you will, on that wheel are really what we're here to present to you today. Our resiliency education, which encompasses our character, civic and life skills education. Sarah is going to be talking about that mental health allocation, the funding that supports those dedicated, um, trainings and supports that we provide to our students through youth mental health first aid, um, which also encompasses that school staff training as well. And you know, we, um, have been working on that initiative for a few years. I also want to kind of center us on, when we talk about students' resiliency, their wellness, their mental health, we address that across the board. It's not just when a student is in crisis that we enact mental health supports. We actually start that day one in our classrooms. So you can see on this slide here, what we talk about, we have relational activities, things that we do with our students to build those relationships. Those are what we would call protective factors, things that we do to ensure that our students feel like they belong, that they are welcome in our classrooms and in our schools. We move over to preventative, also some things we do that are also considered protective factors that we put in place in our classrooms, in our schools, across our district to ensure that when students' needs arise, we know how to respond to them, um, in more of a preventative manner. We know that students are going to struggle. We adults struggle as well. So what do we do to put things in place to prevent that struggle from escalating? But we also know that students do escalate. Adults escalate as well. We were just talking about that in the back. So we do have responsive measures in place as well. And you'll see on there, the majority of our responsive men- measures would be considered non-punitive. Right? We're, we wrap around our students to provide them supports to ensure that they are able to get back to the classroom, able to get back to their learning environment as quickly as possible. And then there are some times when we do need some punitive consequences because behaviors have, um, taken over. So as you can see on this slide, we look at that from tiered perspective. So I also coordinate our N T S S in our district and we talk a lot about those tiers. I know you have as well. All of these relational preventative and responsive measures are done at that tier one, that whole group level, tier two, that small group, and also individualized at that tier three level. And I'm going to pass it on to Sarah to talk about mental health.
Good morning. Um, thank you for welcoming us here today to review what our mental health plan is for our district. Um, I want to start off by talking about the mental health assistance allocation. Um, and then we'll talk about all of the professionals that we provide to our schools as well as trainings for each of our staff members. We are now in year six of the mental health assistance allocation from the state. Um, and that, uh, was a result of the school shooting that we had in February twenty seventeen at Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School. And our legislature decided at that time that it was time to, um, put some procedures into place in our districts to ensure that that doesn't happen again. Um, and so each district is awarded a mental health assistance allocation. Um, and this year our allocation was a little more than two point seven million dollars. We are able to roll forward any fundings that we did not spend in the previous year. Um, so we had a little over five hundred thousand dollars to roll forward this year. So our overall budget for the year, um, for our district is three point three million dollars. I included some information, um, for our previous, uh, three years, um, of what our, um, allocation has looked like, our rollover and our total budget. Um, but thankfully, um, the state has seen, uh, what kind of needs our district has and we have been awarded additional funding each year. and we have been awarded additional funding each year, which is great, because then we can pour that right back into our schools and right back into our students. What we spend our money on, we spend a majority of our funds from the state on personnel. We have one mental health coordinator, who is myself, this year. We have six school social workers that we provide funding for. Two of them are itinerant, and four of them are specifically at one school apiece. We partner with agencies in our community to provide 24 mental health therapists across the district. We have a part-time child psychiatrist who works with our students at Sable. We are able to fund two internships for up-and-coming school psychologists. We then also partner with another community partner to have five registered behavior technicians and one part-time behavior specialist who supervises those behavior technicians. And then we utilize the rest of our funding to provide professional development and, you know, buy any supplies, materials, or equipments that we may need for some of the trainings that we have, or if, you know, a social worker might want a particular counseling program or something like that. We can utilize those funds for that. Some of our funding for personnel is poured directly back into our Sable program, which is our school for academic and behavior learning excellence. For our students who are having mental health struggles out in a general education school or in a typical public school, they are able to submit packets for participation in the Sable program. The point of Sable is a short-term therapeutic environment. Our goal at Sable is to stabilize the students. Get, you know, they may need some medication management, they might need an appropriate diagnosis. We want to stabilize them as quickly as possible and get them back to their typical public school. Generally, we like a nine-week stay. Sometimes that does end up taking a little bit longer. We do have three community agencies that we partner with for mental health therapists within our schools. And in order for our students to receive those services, they are referred for counseling either by the school counselor, the school administrator, or sometimes their parents refer them directly. We do require that parental consent is obtained for each student. And then when a parent requests counseling, it doesn't necessarily mean they're going to get that mental health therapist that we partner with. They could get the school psychologist, the school social worker who's already assigned to that school, or the school counselor. In order to kind of get an idea of how many students we are impacting every month, when our community partners provide their billing at the end of the month, they also provide us with a log of all of the students that they have worked with for that month. Centerstone is our first community partner. They are who we partnered with at the inception of the mental health assistance allocation. They provide to us this year 10 therapists or master-level interns, and they service a total of 25 schools this year. Last year, they were able to see 279 students that our psychologists, social workers, or counselors were unable to see. There are other things that we don't necessarily pay for out of the mental health allocation, but by Centerstone being a community partner, additional services that they offer to us, they have their intervention and prevention team. So that is a smaller group of people that may go out and work with a whole classroom and do some classroom presentations. Or if a school is having some difficulty, or they may have additional mental health supports that we can't meet with our typical staff, they'll provide additional services at that school. We have our community action team. Most people know of it as the CAT team for our students who are significantly involved with some mental health challenges. And then their mobile crisis team from Centerstone is the team that will respond to our schools if we are thinking a student may need to be Baker Acted or need a suicide risk assessment. They come out. The Florida Center, they were a new partner with us just last year. They provide full-time counseling in 10 of our Title I elementary schools. And then their 11th therapist splits time between two elementary schools as well. Last year, they were able to see 134 students for us and provide a total of 1,071 hours of therapy to those students. In addition to providing the support to the students, they were also able to provide 379 hours of collaboration and support to teachers and staff members, which is also really important, because we often have, you know, our staff who don't know how to, quote-unquote, "deal" with a student who is having, you know, a mental health challenge. So it's really great that they're on those campuses full-time to provide that support to those school staff. Our last community partner for therapists is Palm Shores. They provide us with three therapists or master-level interns at a total of eight schools, as well as providing that part-time psychologist to our program at Sable. Last year, there are three therapists. We're able to see 154 of our students. And so it's really great that we have that ability to provide those services to our students within the district. As the school counselor coordinator, I'm going to have Larissa.
Oh, yeah, and our counselors. Jump in on this part. So you can see, our school counselors are full-time, based at our schools. So they are at our school sites every day, all day long. So what we like to look at our school counselors is they are universal. They provide supports to all of our students. They are the ones that help support the referrals to our mental health therapists or other school-based staff. So you can see, we have a lot of school counselors. Our district has been very supportive of putting school counselors in all of our schools. And compared to a lot of other districts, we don't have as many openings as other districts do, which is great. And since this slide was created, I have heard that one of these positions has already been filled, so that's great news as well. As Dr. Breslin mentioned, our state created school counseling standards that were adopted earlier this year. These standards really bring our school counselors to the forefront of providing supports to our students on that full-time basis. Also listed in there is they're listed as being the, providing the provision of resiliency and life skills education. So they work to help support all of the initiatives that the state is putting forth for resiliency. And you can see the seven standards, which are detailed out a little bit more in statute language, but these capture what it is that our school counselors should be focused on in order to provide our students that base of those mental health supports. In addition, our school counselors also do the classroom instruction. They pull small groups, both for skills and for counseling, and they also do individual counseling as needed as well. Also, can't be remiss to say that our school counselors also get tasked with a lot of other duties, as you can see listed on the slide, so that's part of their daily lives as well. That's it for me.
And so then we have our school psychologists, who are itinerant staff. Every one, every school has a school psychologist assigned to them. I would like to take this opportunity to say Happy National School Psychologist Week to all of our school psychologists that is this week. We are very appreciative of all of the work that they do out in our schools. We do have allocated 21 school psychologists for our district. And as I mentioned earlier, we're lucky enough to utilize our assistance allocation to pay for two school psychologist interns as well, which is really great, because we end up hiring them then the following year. They are itinerant, assigned to two to three schools each, and their main responsibilities are participating in those problem-solving meetings that are held at the schools every week, completing those ESE evaluations to see if students need exceptional student education services or 504 plans. We do provide counseling as a related service as outlined on students' IEPs, as well as small group or individual counseling. And I apologize, I say "we" because just until two months ago, that is what I did. We have our school social workers. We have 31 school social workers within our district and two social work interns. 20 of our school social workers are itinerant as well. They are all assigned two to three schools apiece. And then we have 11 school social workers who are either program-based or school-based. So earlier in the allocation, I mentioned that we have four that are school-based, which is great, because they are full-time then in those schools, which is really great for some of our schools who might be, you know, short a counselor or they have just so many students in their school that have those needs. I mentioned the Florida Center is at, you know, full-time at schools. And then we have some secondary schools that could really utilize and use some full-time mental health assistance as well. So we've been able to put a few of our school-based social workers full-time in secondary schools. Social workers are responsible for also participating in those problem-solving team meetings at our schools. They provide counseling as a related service for students with IEPs, small group or individual counseling. They complete, they are not involved in all ESE evaluations, but they do complete some ESE evaluations. They do complete a majority of our 504 evaluations. They do home visits as needed and make sure that they are connecting students, families, and schools with community resources for our students. I mentioned earlier that we've had the increase in funding over the last six years, and through this increase in funding, we are able to hire more people. And by being able to hire more people, last school year, we were able to provide counseling to 2,500 more students than we were able to provide counseling to just two years prior. So it's really beneficial to us that the state continues to kind of up our allocation, because the more money we have means the more people we have, which means the more support our students can receive. And then I just included a quick graphic of how many people we've increased our contracted and district personnel with over the years. We were talking about staff training earlier. Senate Bill 7026 requires that youth mental health first aid training be conducted for specific members of our school staff. And it requires us by June 30th every year, that 80% of those specified job codes be trained. Approximately 300 trainings have been held in this district since October of 2018. As of June 1st, so last year when we submitted our numbers to the state, we were at 86.7% trained. And then, of course, every summer, we have some attrition and new hires. So as of October 31st, we were at 77.6% trained, and that number continues to climb every year, every day, as I send out emails to principals and remind them. All of these certificates magically start appearing in my email box. So the number has been going up every day, which is really great to see. We have a training plan established for this school year to ensure that we're at the 80%. Our trainers, we have a great group of about 17 trainers within our district. They all received an email the other day asking for their availability for the spring so that we could build our spring schedule. And all principals have already received their list of, hey, here's who's on your campus that still needs to be trained. And because they received those emails, the four training dates that I have listed in the presentation are all full for the rest of the semester, which is about 178, 178 or 176 staff members that we could get trained before Christmas time. One big group of people that we do need to train that are on the required list are our food service employees, and of course, that's a little tricky to train them during a school day because they're busy feeding our children. And so we have, we always set aside the January record day and the March record day to do a training of 50 each. And then also our transportation department, they are difficult to train as well, because they're driving our buses. So what we did last year is, two days following school ending for them, we brought them back in and provided the training after their work contract had ended, and then we utilized some of our funding to pay for them to come in, to complete the training, so that we can get them trained. Unfortunately, those two groups are kind of our biggest groups that we lose to attrition, so that's, we're always playing that catch-up game of, we got them trained, they left, and now we have to catch up and train the new people. But that's okay. Additional staff trainings that we have available for our staff members that are completely voluntary, but we do have the Speak Up For Kids Annual Mental Health Conference that's every May. Last year, it was at SCF in Lakewood Ranch. It was a great conference, but it's always every May. Darla Perry is our person who provides everyday behavior tools training. So if teachers feel like they're struggling with behaviors or, you know, not really sure how to respond to some of the things that are happening in their classroom, they can attend behavior tools training. We have offered some trauma-informed care trainings to our counselors and social workers. There's professional crisis management, which is our restraint system when a student is having a mental health crisis or breakdown and is, you know, being difficult to contain within the classroom. And then our newest training is the U-Care system, which is also a restraint training, but it's more built in that trauma-informed care background. So instead of putting our hands on students, it's teaching our teachers and staff members how to deflect or block or have a conversation with a student. So instead of, you know, wrapping a student up, instead they have mats that if the student goes to hit them, they can use the mats to block, you know, what the student is doing. So that's an additional training that we have available, just starting this past summer. And now I will turn it over to Larissa to finish up with the resiliency standards.
All right, so we're going to go back to that foundational piece of when we want our students to demonstrate character, civics, life skills, and resiliency. So I think it's pertinent to kind of break those down a little bit. When we talk about character, those are the behaviors that we demonstrate to others. Our life skills are the things we need. It's kind of self-explanatory, the things we need to get through life. So being able to work well with others, problem-solve, manage conflicts, things of that nature. And then we talk about resiliency, our, the real definition of resiliency is how we bounce back from things. So when we look at that through our lens, it's looking at, what are the strategies that our students have when things don't go the way that they thought they were going to go? So putting all of those three things together, the state has said, this is what builds our students' resiliency, what builds our students' mental health. So the standards are newly revised, newly written, and were adopted in May. We had already been providing our schools lessons based on the old standards. So the lessons, we just realigned this year, and we provide those to our schools to match align with our character traits that we have each month, and those all meet the resiliency standards. You can see that the five-hour required mental health mandate, if you'll remember in the past, that was required for mental health, that is still there. However, it builds in the resiliency standard. So now we actually have something to direct our students' attention and focus to. And that encompasses a lot of different things as well, as part of required instruction. We meet those five-hour mandates by providing those monthly lessons, which hit all of the required resiliency standards, as well as suicide prevention, teen dating, human trafficking, abuse, bullying, all of those required instruction pieces. We meet those through our Monique Burr Teen Safety Matters Program, in addition to the lessons we provide. From there, we also have all of the wonderful people that Sarah has been talking to you about to provide supplemental groups to our students who might need some more practice or skill-building. In alignment with that, as Dr. Breslin mentioned, the state has provided quite a bit of funding for us to work with our Manatee Education Foundation. So we're very excited that we've been working with Mary Glass, who is eager to do this work with us and wanted to support all of the great things that we've been working on. My time up until recent has really been the coordinator of school climate, so it's been building on things that we've been doing in our district, and now we've got some secured funding to see them through and start some new ideas as well that align with the resiliency initiative. So you can see, we were awarded $499,000 through the consortium from basically now until the end of next September. And we have an ambitious list of things that we're going to do. The state designed this, these grant funds to build on the resiliency initiatives in our district while increasing student safety and then bringing our community into the mix as well, ensuring that we have that partnership going on as we, as we work through. So you can see, a lot of our ideas, our activities that we plan to accomplish in that very short period of time are listed here. Some of our big highlights, we've wrapped them into those resiliency categories, so things that we're going to continue to build on, to build our students' and our staff's resiliency skills. We have items that we're going to increase our safety. So one of those is, that we have in place already, is our Safe Promise Clubs. That's through the Sandy Hook Promise. Those Safe Promise Clubs, we're promoting to build. We want them to go district-wide, one at every school. Right now, we have about 10 in place in secondary schools that we're hoping that we are able to provide support to them. And really, those look at student-led initiatives. They have two main events each year. The Say Hello, it's a week-long event where we encourage students to just say hello to each other. And then the other week is called Say Something Week. So really encouraging our students So really encouraging our students to, Mr. Tatum, I know that's something you often speak about, is really encouraging our students to look, listen, and share when they hear things that might be going on our campuses. And then lastly is bringing our community in. So we're very excited that we have a community partner that we're going to be able to help them get the youth mental health community training, which will include that training for our parents and our larger community. So what we've been training all of our staff on, we're now going to be able to expand that into our community so that they can understand what our student mental health needs are and how to appropriately respond or get them help in those moments. So you see, we have, we have a lot of wonderful things that are going on in that grant. And I'm going to ask Mary Glass to come up and add to anything there, since she's been a great partner in this work. And we're very excited to continue that partnership for resiliency.
Thank you, Larissa. The Manatee Education Foundation is just so honored and pleased that we were awarded this grant because we started months ago, and this great team behind me, we've been working for months. We brought on the former grant writer from the district, Melissa Schwab, who actually wrote the grant with us. And all, everything that's included in here, I think it's been clearly stated that it's all the DOE standards. So what we're doing, it's a very different grant than what you normally would be. You'd have to look at it and say, does it line up? But this, this definitely lines up with safety and the resiliency. And I think that's the critical thing because a lot of our partners are law enforcement, you know, and that's the thing. Building resiliency through the community, meaning we're gonna be bringing lots of partners in to work on this, not just within the district. And I think that was one of the reasons why Casey DeSantis wanted the foundations involved, so we bring in the community. But definitely couldn't have done it without all the help with the district leadership. Thank you. Want to add anything?
As you can see, we're very excited about this work. I mean, it, it is gonna have an impact on our whole community. And we can't say thank you enough to Mary Glass, who came months ago. And I was still in curriculum, Larissa was in curriculum with me, and we're like, how, let's, let's start it. Because if we don't, I mean, we had to sort of compete for the funding. So we could, we could get it and reach out to community partners and get their agreement that they would do this work with us. And so I think it's the beginning. We're, we're gonna be able to come back and show the work that has been accomplished in, in hopes that it, it is a great deal of money. But it's just the beginning of fulfilling a need that I see as a parent in this community and as someone who's worked in this school district for, for many years.
Yeah, and as you pointed out, not all the districts got the money. I think only like 37 out of the 65 counties got the funding, so we were very fortunate to get it.
Right, right. It was a lot of guidelines to make sure we were tightly aligned with the state initiatives. And so we, we were able to accomplish that. So we're excited. We're very proud of this and happy to present it. So at this time, any, any questions?
Board, we'll start with Ms. Mester.
First of all, I just want to thank Mary Glass. Yesterday, I got to sit next to her at breakfast, and she was talking to me about this. She's like, I'm gonna see you tomorrow. And I'm like, oh, yeah. And she starts talking about it, and she's like, we've been working for so long, and, and we're just excited to present it to the board. And I could, I could tell your passion. And, and I, and I said, I said, well, we're so fortunate that we have such a good relationship. So I, I'm eternally grateful for that and for you. So thank you. I really loved Screenagers. Because there's just like so much more research coming out about how much social media, the screens, all of it really does affect a child's mental health. And every day, like I see more and more and more about it. So I really appreciate that because it, it needs to be looked at in that way of like, hey, it's for your health. I appreciate that. Also, the parent universities at identified schools, I just, I'm not asking which schools. I want to know how those schools are identified.
Right, so, so we look at incidents that have occurred at schools over the past, so historical data tied to behavior, tied to students' mental health, and, and in a partnership with schools who are willing and, and able to let us come in where we see the most need. And like we said, it's the beginning, and hopefully through that effort, we're able to then expand to more schools.
Okay, yeah, I liked the idea. I just was curious. Sometimes the identification, I don't know, I don't always feel like, in that case, I think it does align with where it should go.
Right, right.
I didn't want it to be only one type of school or one other type of school because mental health issues can happen in any demographic, any socioeconomic area. And so I just wanted to make sure that it was targeted based on that, that type of data. But I appreciate that. That's exactly what I think it should be.
They did some data digging to, to really pull.
Okay.
So it would, it would be at, at schools that they're showing that, that need the most.
Okay. Those were really my only two things I just really appreciated. I really appreciate you guys. I know how much time and effort this takes to get it all done, so thank you, and thank you so much.
Yeah, I, I too am very appreciative of all the two guys too. And I continue, I, I asked for this to be on a workshop because I am overwhelmed by what, identifying what are our needs? How are we meeting them? Where are we short? What could we do better? And there are all kinds of mental health issues, right? Anything from anxiety in our teenagers, which is not acceptable, you know? But I don't know that we do anything about it, all the way to, do we have family counseling? You know, there are times that the family unit needs the mental health services. Do we provide any of that?
So we do have, when we say wraparound supports for students, we do have wraparound supports for families. And, and that comes in different forms. If a family is facing a homeless situation, you know, we have a group that, that is able to respond. As far as our work with Centerstone, yes, I can tell you, you know, all counseling that a student would receive is in partnership with the parent. And then they have the tools to also suggest to the parent additional support that would involve the family. And Sarah could probably speak to that more. But just in my experience in working as a school administrator on that side, I do know that that is part of the support, is looking at what does the student need, what does the family need?
What do we do if, okay, if we see a student needing assistance, go to get the parental consent and they deny it? Do we have, is there anything that we can do?
So I'm gonna let Sarah come up and help address this. And, and of course, that, and, and I've seen that happen as a school administrator. Generally, we're, our leaders are equipped to, to work with the parent to arrive at that, that answer of yes. But it is a lot of, it's that relationship building with the parent to build the trust to let us work, work with their student and make sure that they're in the loop on every step that's being taken. And that's how we're able to, to get that partnership.
If I'm not mistaken, one of the school shootings was a case where the child was identified, but the parent did not agree to assistance. Is that correct?
Correct. So we have a couple of different ways that we address that. If we are looking at providing individual counseling at the school level and the parent declines it, of course, we document. And, you know, we do, like you said. We try and work on our relationship with the parent and explain how, you know, how we see that impacting their student on our campus, because that's where we see the student. But of course, documentation is key. On the other hand, if a parent, if we have concerns about a parent or a student, and we think they may meet criteria for a Baker Act or something of that nature, and the parent declines for us to complete the screening for a student under the age of third grade, or, you know, we complete the screening for the student above third grade and the parent still does not agree, we have a letter that they, they must come pick their student up immediately. And we have a letter that they must sign indicating that they are declining service for their student, kind of to cover ourselves of, we noticed this concern, we are very concerned about your student, and you are choosing to decline the services that we're offering. But we do, we are constantly trying to build our rapport with the parents to explain to them that, how important it is for their student. And this resiliency grant, hopefully, will go a long way to that, towards that as well because now we can bring our community members in, give them the training on that youth mental health first aid so they can realize what is, you know, typical adolescent development versus a mental health challenge or concern. And then, you know, regarding your previous question about, do we work with the families? For example, our Florida Center therapists who are in the schools full-time, they sometimes do have the parent come in during their session with the student so that they can work together. For some of our other agencies will refer out to family resources because they provide counseling services for, they'll do family, group, or individual on a sliding or free scale. So we do have some other community resources that we're able to refer them to.
A lot of the resiliency initiatives, I'm looking at the activities. Are those, do those fall on our teachers to have to, to do, to be?
So it, it depends on each school's situation. So in some cases, the, the activities are teacher-led. In other cases, they are aligned in certain courses and as part of required instruction. Schools do submit a plan that works best for their campus on how they will accomplish all required instruction pieces, including anything tied to resiliency. So they're able to, to manage it in a way that best fits their campus and their staff.
Teachers feel overwhelmed?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I can see that. If we had, if money was not an object, okay.
You found a tree?
Right.
Yeah, I have, I have them in my backyard.
What was your address again?
The, if money was not an object, how, how many more counselors, therapists would you say would be ideal? You know, 25% more, 50% more?
So, so the experts are the ones sitting behind me. But I can speak through the lens of a former school principal. And to have a mental health counselor at every school dedicated would be something that I would love to see. I think that that, as a former school principal, I, I did have for a time a dedicated mental health counselor, and her caseload was kept full. I, I think every school could, could fill the caseload as a start. And, and I don't know if that would even be enough. It depends on the scope of what we want to accomplish on the school side of things. Remember, a lot of our families may say no to our services, but go out and find their own private services, which is, you know, which is great and, and, you know, encouraged if they have the means. And so I, I don't want to assume it's only happening in schools.
Oh, you're just, okay.
So I can't answer it beyond that, except that my, I would want a dedicated counselor at, at each school. I'd want to fill more school counselor positions as well, as well, because their workload is, is very large. But again, we have to be able to hire people. And so it's more than just about having funding. I mean, Larissa and her team has, has done some work to partner with FAU to provide a cohort to take them through a counseling program to get that degree and credentials to become a school counselor. But being able to do more of that work, to work with staff who have a calling and an interest to go into school counseling, to become a psychologist, to educate. So we do have a, a staff to pull from. Because a lot of times, if you go out and find the money, it's okay, well, who's gonna staff these positions? Where there just is a shortage. And so more on education, so we end up having those that we can hire, would, would be my, my first one.
Are high school counselors, are they also providing counseling on, you know, are they also doing assistance with each student on their, their schedules, on their career plans, on their dual enrollment? I mean, they're doing all of that.
Yes, and we have our college career advisors who assist as well. But it is.
How do they possibly have time to do mental health counseling?
They have very little time to try to, to juggle it all.
Would one mental health counselor full-time in a high school be sufficient?
I would think at a high school, you would need more than one. Mine was at a middle school of about 1,200 students, and that caseload was full. And of course, our high schools are double that size in many cases.
Our, our high schools, we have, what, six, seven now? Do they all have mental health counselors full-time, at, at least one?
Not to my, not to my knowledge. Making sure I wasn't fitting.
Who makes the determination of what level of counseling we have staffed in our schools and which schools they go to? Is that now your job, Dr. Breslin?
In conjunction with the team and of course, Mr. Jensen and Dr. Weisong. So yes, when we look at allocations for, for any position, it would be, we, we provide the data, we provide our funding sources, we provide a list of how we would wish to fund if there was an unlimited amount of funding. And then we take it and work with our cabinet team under the lead of Dr. Weisong to, to build out a staffing plan.
I'm sorry, this is grim. Okay, I had, let's see, the, we have clinical therapists in 10 Title I schools, is that correct? Is that funding through the Title I grant? Or is that our, does that share in our mental health funding from the state?
Mental health allocation funding.
Okay, so does any of our Title I grant cover any mental health? No?
I could go back to, because, you know, schools receive some Title I fundings that they also can use as the school needs, as the school sees fit. And so I could go back and find that information and provide it to the board, but I couldn't tell you right this second.
Esser money being used for mental health?
I don't believe we have any mental health, school psychologists in Esser, to my knowledge. Yes, we have some school counselors sitting in Esser.
And so we're gonna be short when the Esser money goes away then? We've got to decide whether to cover it ourselves or?
That's part of the process we're working through now, is what, what's in the Esser grant that is critical to normal operations. Those, those positions obviously have to go back into the general fund. And then we start working through what's the, what's the financial impact of that.
Do we have more in those positions than we did before COVID?
I, I couldn't answer that today. We'd have to go back and, and, and look at, look at, at exactly those numbers. Because really what you're looking at is, obviously, every school, for example, at elementary, you're gonna put a counselor at every school. And the question is, where do you have two, right? And some of that is because of school size changes or whatever. But we, we could look at that data.
Do we have more staffing in schools that have autism, the ASD units? Or that's just?
So you're.
I, I've seen some of the, some of the behavioral issues that they are dealing with. And those are pretty, not pretty, they are, they are significant.
Right, and so you'll see layered support, behavior therapists, social workers. Yes, you will, you will see increased support as needed. It, it could be that a school doesn't require it until a certain point in the year when, there's a variety of reasons why behavior might spike. And then the additional support, and that's why you see it as flexible.
Right.
The support is brought in to meet that student need and, and settle.
When a teacher identifies that there's a need, do they go through their principal? Or can they reach out directly to someone?
We would always want the, the principal involved. But yes, there are specialists that are assigned to school that work under Nikki Cox's group. And they're there to support. So teachers will contact specialists, but then we always try to loop in the principal so they're aware of any support that we're bringing to their campus.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, all of you.
All of you.
Mr. Tatum?
Good morning, Dr. Brezlin.
Good morning, how are you today?
Are so good.
Good.
Can you help me understand what we're legally required to do as far as providing mental health services to our children in the public school system? Like, what, what does the law require?
So there's a couple of different layers. It's 1557 is, is a good place to start. That lays out the groundwork for much of this work. And so if we're talking about the school counselor standards, it begins there. And in order to, to meet 1557, those standards were developed and put into play. So we have to abide by those standards. The resiliency, you'll see it aligned, I, I think, let me look at my notes. Rule 6A 5.079 was adopted by the State Board of Education in May of 2023. And that states specifically the resiliency skills. And because of that rule, and the detailing of the resiliency skills and standards that have to be addressed, that has helped satisfy House Bill 1557. So, so all of this is required in some capacity. The mental health allocation, of course, is the state funding with specific parameters of how that money is to be spent. The plan is sent to the state, the state approves it, releases the funding. We then report back to the state. So it's all aligned with what the state requirements detail.
So, so the reason I'm asking, and I know everybody that's here is working really hard on this, and it's required by the law, apparently, as you just pointed out. And so if it's required by the law, we have to hire good people who are dedicated to get it done. Sometimes I do, I mean, as I, as I look, as I listen to the presentation, and I'm getting educated on this myself, it seems like we're almost providing medical care to, to these children, especially when you see words like psychiatry and things like that. I do wonder when the, when the school system transferred, or when society in general, the state decided that the school system was going to take on, this is a pretty big chunk of what you might call, if not, certainly, mental health care, if not, medical care. But it is legally required, and so we need to have people in place to do it, and we need to have the, the funding to do it. Do we have, I assume, like, medical liability insurance or malpractice insurance and things like that? How do we make sure that if we're actually providing mental health care, or actually psychiatry, I did see that word in there, that's more medical care? What happened, do we, how do we cover ourselves for malpractice insurance and things like that? Or is there such a thing?
I'd have to consult with, with legal as far as how our insurance is covered for, for all situations on campus, whether they see a nurse or the psychologist is, is weighing in on whether that student needs extra services related to an IEP or some other factor.
What either of our attorneys like to weigh in on, whether you feel like, like, let's say the psychiatrist gives an overdose to a student and the child, you know, something horrible happens to the child or something like that? I mean, I, I'm just curious, because we are providing medical care in, within the school. If you need to research that, it'd be something maybe you could just research and get back to us on. I just, I, I certainly want children to be mentally.
On that note?
Yeah.
Are we actually providing, like, like?
We're not prescribing medication.
Okay, I want to make sure.
There's a, a need for that, it would go beyond us. And we have community partners that can provide that with parents' permission. But it's not something they would do at, at the school.
Okay, so maybe, because when I see the word psychiatry, that's a medical doctor who goes beyond just providing counseling services, but even.
So a lot of this is psychologists who, who then work, work with the student. And some of it is, is just helping to diagnose what that student's needs are so that we can address their behavior and/or academic gaps.
But even in mental health, there could be, someone says, hey, you didn't, you didn't follow the standards of mental health care, you know, that we, that are generally accepted within the American Psychological Association. And so if someone could file a malpractice suit against us as we're, as we're providing mental health care. It's just, it's just something I wanted to, I was thinking about and wanted an answer to. And if it, it would be possible for one of our attorneys to maybe just look into that and feel like if someone were to file out like a healthcare malpractice, a mental health care malpractice suit or something like that. Because we've decided, apparently, as a state and as a, and as a school system that we're going to do this, that's fine. I just would like to make sure that, you know, if there's a malpractice suit or something filed against us, are we adequately covered with our insurance? Because we essentially are providing health care to these, to these children within the school system. I was curious as to why the Sable programs are limited through grades, to grades one through eight? And we don't do it for, there must be some rule, legal requirement or something, or?
So when Sable was first brought into Manatee County, it was brought in as K-8. I don't have the background, pre-K through eight. I don't have the background of why it doesn't go through nine and 12? Do you want to, yes, that'd be great.
You come to the podium, because it'll record your.
Good morning, everybody, thank you.
Good to see you guys. And Ms. Mason is currently kind of overseeing Sable for us. But I was here when we built the program a couple of years ago. Just a little bit of history, because I, Jean, I think you might have been here, but you might have been the only one when we built it.
They make me feel old.
No, you're just my, our veteran. No, well, I was here too, so we must be here together, right? But anyway, so we originally built Sable specifically because we were having, at that time, it was launched because honestly, a pre-K student that was, had some history and had some severe, severe trauma. And we were seeking to build a program that would help us as a county to support students like him. This was well before Parkland, this was well before any of these mental health. And so even at that time, I'm, I'm proud to say that we were really trailblazers in this. We are one of the very, very few counties in the state that have a specific mental health site. And we had to get some very special permissions from the state to be able to do that. And so it started out, and honestly, the, the honest reason that it went pre-K to eight is sometimes it's a very, very small site. When we opened, we were in portables on the back of what at that time was the Harley Center. It was still a middle school at the time. And we had some concerns about how do you serve children all the way from the age of three up until kids that can be 18? Or if they're identified as students with disabilities, can feasibly up until the age of 22? So you can't really have that kind of span in a site that small. And so we looked at focusing on, because we were starting primarily looking at a pre-K student that was in need of help, we were looking at younger children. And then also additionally, because they are a small site, they don't have a whole lot of staff there. And so sometimes when you get to those high school students that have mental health disorders, sometimes those behaviors can greatly escalate quickly. And sometimes you need a larger number of staff to make sure that everybody is safe when you deal with those behaviors. So that's why we made the decision at that time to run that pre-K and just go up through the eighth grade program. Okay?
Yes. Following on to, to that discussion that was very good from Ms. Cox, I've actually had principals tell me that at high schools, that they've said, there are students in my school that I feel are danger to themselves and to the students and the staff, and yet they're in my school. Any thoughts on, I mean, maybe we're legally limited by what we can do? And I just kind of throw that in your lap, since now we've hired you to take care of all this, Dr. Brezlin. So you need to come up with a solution in the next 30 seconds.
And there are more solutions to be had with, with some of the difficulties that, that our school leaders have to face every day, and not just with, with this issue. But we do have our threat assessment process. We have gone back now to, to train our staff as appropriate. All principals have their four-hour training. We have certain personnel who have the eight-hour training on school campuses. I've done my four-hour, I'm going to have an 8-hour training, just so I'm fully aware of the process in my, in my new role. So that's one measure. If we do feel that we have a student that poses a safety risk to themselves or anybody else, then yes, we follow those protocols. And then we also, we would ask for, for anyone that has a concern of a student to work through the system reform. We do have the supports. And if the support's not there, we will keep digging. You know, we do have to abide by all laws and statutes and students' rights and forming parents and parents' wishes. And so it is difficult to navigate through this. But, you know, we do the best we can with it. And we follow the, the systems that we're permitted to follow.
Well, if it ever comes to the point where you feel like there's some legislative changes that need to be made, I mean, we do have a legislative agenda. And, you know, when I hear, I've talked to principals and assistant principals that have had to go to the emergency room in elementary schools and gone to the hospital and things like that. And I just think, wow. If a child gets to that point where they're doing, where they're that violent, is there some other type of program that we need to put them in that maybe they're not appropriate? It's not appropriate to have them in a public school? And if they're illegal, did you want to weigh in on that?
When you're done.
Oh, okay. And if there's some, you know, legislative changes that we need to make so that that could take place? And, you know, it's probably better for the child that they get the services that they need, and it's, it's better for the, the students and the teachers and the principals that they're not in the emergency room and in the hospital, you know, so. But Ms. DeGass, you know, you'd like to roll in?
Well, there's a board policy, it's 2410 that references school health services. And in that policy, it talks about if a student is having a crisis situation and if there is a fear that the child poses an imminent danger to themselves or others, what the educator or school personnel are supposed to do. And they're supposed to contact a mental health professional to look at whether an involuntary examination needs to happen for that student. So, you know, that would be my response to any, any one of our employees who is concerned about the safety of a child. They should be taking that action, contacting the appropriate individual so we can get that child the help they need. But in our board policy, it does talk about mental health counseling services, case management services, and human and social services that may be provided at our sites with mutual agreements by community-based partners and public and private agencies. So it's certainly contemplated in your board policy that mental health services is something that the district's going to work towards, you know, providing that as a part of the educational and the overall health of the student. There are a number of statutes that are referenced, but without having, you know, more time to kind of examine those, I can't really give you a, a full explanation of what obligations we have from a mental health perspective. But if the board isn't, is wanting to change, you know, to the extent that they support mental health, we'd have to look at that. Is that helpful?
Yeah, that was helpful. I'm just, as I look at this globally, I just think, well, if we're going to do mental health care, and it sounds like we've kind of made a board decision and a state decision, and the laws require it, then. I'm just looking at some of the things from a, I guess, an elected official perspective, like, are we adequately, adequately covered with insurance? Do we need, need any legislative relief to make the money that we have and the programs that we have more useful and better for our students? So if those ideas come to your mind, you know?
I, I appreciate that, yes. It's definitely a community effort to support, right? Thank you.
Great. Let's see. Ms. Glass, would it be possible for you to just give me an overview of the, excuse me, just a second for Dr. Brezlin, to give me an overview of the Manatee Education Foundation? I mean, we've met now, and I know you're a great member of the community and you support education. I've seen you, I saw you at the Arts event yesterday. And so I guess what I would like is just an overview of the, the MEF, as you call it, the Manatee Education Foundation. It is a, is it a nonprofit organization?
501(c)(3) nonprofit, private nonprofit.
Private nonprofit. But then I thought I heard earlier in the presentation that the, the state gives you money, and then it flows through you to other organizations?
This was unusual. This came through, it's really was Esser Federal, then went to the DOE, and then came to the consortium, and then to us. And then the consortium had a supply online for, you know, all of us wrote different things in different counties. But we lined up and tried to layer in what you already had here and working with the team. You know, they put a lot of the things in place that were just perfect for the resiliency through the community. Anything else on the foundation? I mean, I've been with it, with the foundation for 16 years, it'll be 17 in March, and have worked very closely with the district. I used to be part of the district, and then we separated in 12. But, I mean, it's actually been better for the foundation to be on their own to raise funding, and that's, that's why we did it. We had a really good reason why we did it, and the board and the school board was behind us all.
On your own as opposed to, sometime in the past, it was like, it was part of the school system or part of the school board? Okay. And so you?
We call them the DSO.
DSO, which stands for?
District.
Services.
Services. DSO.
Direct Support Organization.
Direct Support Organization.
So you're actually, like, your, that organization's budget was part of the school system budget? Is that?
No, no, it was separate. But the one thing that's been so, you know, one of the things that drove this was probably every major, big county is separate. And that's what kind of, as we got educated and learned about all of it, you know, Hillsborough, Pinellas, Sarasota, everybody, they're, all of them are separate. And not only that, but you can, but, but, but the key thing is though, is that our, that our sole mission is to support the school district. And that's not, no other foundation in town does that. That's, this, we support the teachers and the students of Manatee County through programs, through teacher grants, through many things. But this will be a perfect example of it, and many other things that are coming.
And it's not just mental health, obviously.
Oh, no.
The arts as maybe.
The arts, as you, as you know, we've been huge supporter of the arts for years. I mean, to have those two kids yesterday say that the heart and soul was one of the reasons that they pursued their arts career, that was pretty moving. I mean, it was pretty cool to see from a foundation standpoint. But no, we.
Grants to teachers are huge, you know? If I wanted in the classroom, wanted to, to have some kind of program and it had iPads, I'm just naming something, you could do a grant through.
Oh, the programs are endless, what we've supported in the classrooms. I mean, you, you get everything from building, you know, farms and, you know, just all kinds of funding that we've put into the school district through STEM, the arts, all of that. So it's been, we've probably done, I think we're now, well, every year we do about $700,000 a year we give back to the school district. This year, we're going to be doing a million three. So things are, you know, really moving along with the help of the community and with the support of the district. I mean, a lot of you are behind the foundation, and that's important. The superintendent supports the foundation, and it's critical. For, we need that ancillary funding to help, because this $500,000, another half a million layered in on top of this, what you're already doing, I think is going to make a big difference, because this grant will pay for a lot of those programs we talked about that Larissa mentioned, that we'll be able to do.
So I'm supportive, and I'm a fan, I just am trying to get educated.
Sure.
I don't want my questions to come across as an inquisition or anything like that.
No, no, and anything you, you know, want to know about the foundation, we're an open door.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Glass, I appreciate your time.
He did purchase a piece of art. I, I watched him. Sure, he knew that was a requirement of a piece of art.
I was told by the senior board members, you will buy art. Find something then.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ms. Glass, I appreciate it.
And I wanted to clarify your question about the, the psychiatrist. I was just speaking with Mrs. Cox. We do, at Sable, we have a contracted psychiatrist who's contracted from Palm Shores, who will prescribe medication as needed at, at Sable only, it's the only site we have that. But because they're contracted, they carry their own liability insurance with, with Palm Shores.
Okay, that's good to know. Still think for mental health care, it'd still be interesting to know, you know, if someone files a mental health care malpractice claim against us, if somehow our insurance covers this. But if you all could look into that and maybe get back to me, I'd appreciate it. But it's good to know, I appreciate that update, thank you. Let's see. And then the bucket of money for this $3 million, approximately whatever it is, is that one of those, because I, I saw that it rolls over from year to year, so it's not in the general fund, and maybe this is more of a Dr. Weisong, but I don't know.
Right, it is not in the general fund.
It stays in that, in that, and we use it?
It is part of, I mean, it's part of the general fund, but it, it's a specific allocation in the, in the, within the FEFP.
Okay.
And so, yeah, so when you get to the end of the year, if there's money left over, it rolls within that same category of funding.
Okay. It can't be moved to the general fund to cover other costs or something like that? Okay, thank you. Let me just kind of cross things off here. And what's the difference between a school counselor and a social worker? Because it seemed like their jobs were very similar, except that a social worker actually maybe does some home visits or something like that, is that correct?
Social worker certainly can do some home visits. Sarah, do you want to talk, or Larissa, if you want, either one of you want to talk about the, the main differences?
So our school counselors are required by state to be master-level trained in school counseling, mental health. And so our school counselors, again, are there every day. They create a comprehensive counseling program that meets academic, behavioral, social, and post-secondary success. So we have specific strands, and you see the new standards help to align that work. And so they, we do, our psychologists as well, we all do a lot of similar jobs. The easiest way that I've tried to explain this is, our school counselors, since we're there every day and we have a comprehensive school program, we, we meet that tier one, that whole school, interwoven into the fabric of what's going on on the campus. We pull tier-two groups. Very rarely do we get time to work with students on an ongoing, long-term basis. We do, but it's not what we can spend a lot of time doing. Our social workers then are able to come in, and they support some of our tier-two, so running some of those small groups. They don't have a whole lot of time to do that, um, but they end up working a lot with our individual students, especially those who have it written on their IEPs as a part of their educational plan. And our psychologists do the same. So we kind of look at, we cover the tiers of supports. Um, school counselors cover the, the brunt, the front line, if you will. And then our social workers and psychologists can come in and work a lot with those individual needs. And we meet somewhere in the middle with those groups and things. Our psychologists do a lot of the evaluations. Our social workers help with the community resources. So we fit together, doing separate roles, but very similarly aligned. Um, we work together on our school campuses to make sure that the needs of our students are addressed. So we kind of our own team at each individual school.
So we, yeah, so we're always collaborating, making sure that we're not double-dipping or working with the same student because we wouldn't want to give, you know, conflicting information to a student. Um, but yes, because our social workers and psychologists are itinerant and only on a campus. Um, for example, our social workers are on elementary campuses only one day a week and then they're on secondary campuses two days a week. Um, and psychologists are kind of flipped. We're on, uh, elementary campuses more often two days a week and secondary one day a week just because of the number of ESE evaluations and referrals that occur. They mostly happen at the elementary level and that's what a majority of our job, um, or our time is spent doing, are those ESE evaluations. Whereas our social workers then, we put them, you know, we kind of give them more time on the secondary level because there are so many students that need that individual, uh, counseling. And so they spend more of their time there. Like I mentioned earlier, they're not, they don't have as many ESE evaluations to do just because of what's required for those evaluations. Not all evaluations require a social work assessment, um, whereas almost every evaluation requires a psychological evaluation. So, um, and then just education-wise, um, like counselors have a master's in school counseling, uh, social workers have a master's in school social work.
Great. Thank you, ladies.
Yep, of course.
Thank you. And then either for Dr. Brezlin or Dr. Weisong, in talking to, about this issue with some of the principals about allocations of staff members, there, there's a, a, a difference in how it could be done. For instance, it could be done just by, based on the number of students you have at a school, this is what you get as your allocation. Or it could be done by looking at how many incidents are happening at each school and maybe moving resources around. Like instead of, I don't know, instead of based on student numbers, based on incidents. But I don't know what your thoughts are on allocating resources based on where there seems to be a need as opposed to just you got this many students, that's what you get as a, an allocation for staff.
And I think, and, and certainly Dr. Weisong, um, can expand in greater detail than I can, but, but we do both. When, when we work with the team and that's something the team has already started in looking at, um, needs for next school year so we can plan forward. Um, it, we do needs, um, by student numbers, but we also look at student needs at the school. And we do pull the data to determine how we, um, would allocate some of the work that the social workers might need to, to, to be heavier at another school because of data that has been received during the school year. So that is part of that conversation. And like I said, it, it changes sometimes mid-year. I mean, that, it's, it's fluid, um, with a lot of these positions based on what's, what's happening in a certain area at a certain school.
Because I did have, go ahead, Dr. Weisong.
I think that's accurate. In, in this district, um, there are, um, formula-based staffing, but then you're also making adjustments at the margins based on either data you're seeing or requests that are coming in. And while you're doing that, you're watching the bottom line of the budget, um, and, and trying to, um, you know, try to make sure that, uh, you know, that, that we're doing a good job for taxpayers as well. So, um, so it's, it's a little bit of both. Keep in mind, um, that when we enter the realm of students with disabilities, we're, we're also looking in the aggregate at services on each student's individualized education plan, right? And so that's, that's an important role as well because when that IEP team agrees to offer services, that's a, that's a contractual agreement we're making. And so you're also looking at, at those pieces.
Okay. So my last comments will be is that because we're legally required to do it and if that's what we are going to do, then I want us to do it well. So I'm supportive of everybody that's working here and I want this to be well-funded and I want us to have a good program. I, I do wonder sometimes, you know, we have large meal programs for children. So the schools have now become the place where a lot of children get their primary nutrition. And then now the school system has become a place where the children are getting, uh, their mental health care and even some me- medical care when we go down the psychiatry road. But it is what it is and so we're going to do it and we're going to do it well. And I'm supportive of all you working here and these children do need these services. And, you know, the counterargument to that is, well, if not here, where? And, and that does mean something to me, like when you're feeding children or if not at the school, they're not going to get it at home, so where? And they're with us, you know, with us all day. And then there's also an argument to be made for, well, look, if you have to give these children mental, it's kind of like the, the clinics, you know? Some people are concerned, well, we're now doing healthcare for children, real healthcare for children on our school properties. I've assuaged that concern. It's like, no, the clinic is just on the property. But, you know, we're not doing healthcare. We're not paying for it. Parental consent is still required. So the, the similar argument would be made of, well, if a child needs to have mental health care, you can take them out of school and drive them half an hour across town to Centerstone and they get their services and they drive a half an hour back and mom's got to take off work. Or you can just do the, this, provide this counseling and these mental health services in the school and that keeps them in school more. They don't have to take an hour going back and forth and mom and dad don't have to take off work. So I, I see both sides of that. It, it's a difficult situation. It's a lot of effort. But I'm overall supportive of it, especially since it's a legal requirement.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we're, we're excited. Our, our primary goal as a district is to provide learning for our students. And by meeting these needs, we're able to ensure that they're able to access their learning. And, and so we're, we're excited about the work. Yes, we, it is a state requirement. Um, that, yes, we want our students to be able to get to their learning. And if this is what they need to get it, then yeah.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Um, thank you all for what you do. I mean, it's, this is probably the toughest part about education, I think, and, and but echo what, what Mr. Tatum says. I mean, I, I, we have become so much more than just education. And I think that, uh, to the answer of, well, if not here, then where, right? Um, I think a lot of times when we have that, wait a minute, we're getting into mental health for kids. We're getting into the health for kids. We're getting into nutrition for kids. Um, because those students aren't getting it at home. They're not coming from a place where I was lucky enough to have my mom and dad and mom would take off work or could, could, could do it. Um, and wanted to do it. Um, so there's, there's a lot of students that we have that their parents can't or won't. They're not involved. Um, and so if it's not from us, then where? My only, my thing is if it's going to be mandated and you're going to make us do it, pay for it. Um, and then that's something, I know Ms. Messenger brings it up all the time. We're mandated to do a lot of things, yet we don't get the funding for it. Um, and, and then, and then you have people in the public that don't understand that either and wonder why, wait a minute, well, where is this and this and this? Well, we're, we're doing so many services for students now that we may not have had in, in the past twenty years ago, thirty years ago, whatever. But it wasn't getting done back then either, right? And so, um, and so if we don't do it now, it's not going to be done now. I, I mean, you know, I think somebody said, who, who cares if they're going to learn to read? Uh, who cares what they're learning? I think, Miss Song, you said in your public comment, who cares what they're learning that day if they're worried about other things? I mean, and that's the truth. That's the reality, right? Um, it's unfortunate, I think, that it's unfortunate that we're in a position that we can't just worry about just educating children. But I love that we're doing it because it, it's, it needs to be done. And if we don't do it, these students end up becoming adults in, in production in society. Them having a, a good life falters because we're not doing that. And, and again, to you all that, I know, it's, it's, it, it's one of the hardest that, what, what the mental health, ESE, all, is one of the hardest parts of public education. There's no question. And, um, from a family who, my brother has Down syndrome, um, you know, my, my parents were extremely active, extremely vocal, trying to move the district back then when he was younger to, to better and bigger programs. And they moved around from Lee to, you know, Orange Ridge and Palm Sol and Manatee and so, um, but you think about the students that don't have that family support. Um, and so if not in the schools, where, right? We got them seven, eight hours a day and, and we typically have them in working at, working hours more than they are at home. Um, and so, you know, my, my only wish is that if we're going to, you know, it's kind of, Ms., to Ms. Foreman's point, you know, she asked, well, money wasn't object. How many would we need? How many do we have to, you know? And it's, it's, that's, that's the thing. It's like, okay, great. You made this initiative. We're going to do it. You're, you're going to make, but you don't give us the resources to fill those, our needs. Um, and that's something that we just, that, yes, to Mr. Tatum's point, we've got to be able to talk to all our elected officials from a state level and say, this, this is going on. And this is, you know, but this is just one of many things in my personal opinion that is mandated that's not funded correctly. Um, but that's a whole nother topic.
Right.
But I really appreciate what you do. Mary, I mean, Ms. Glass, you, you know, the foundation's fantastic and, um, I know you all have a really, really tough job. Um, and, uh, you know, one question that I do have that kind of is talked through, I just really haven't heard it yet. And I'm assuming it, I'm assuming there is a connection. Mr. Chapman's typically our one that, that talks about this a lot. But, um, is it, is it, um, um, we, is it we care? Uh, what, what's the, the, the platform?
The Unitas?
The Unitas, yes, that's it. Is all this kind of inter, interwoven amongst everything?
We didn't say that, but, but Mr. Chapman has been on the planning team with us and, and yes, it all is, is woven together. I mean, the, this group of experts here is amazing, but there's many more behind them that are in, involved.
Well, the community aspect is huge, so it doesn't always fall on to us, right? But, you know, I think that I, I, we don't want to be all pulling in different directions. We want to pull together. And so, you know, to, to Ms. Foreman's point, if a, if a parent were to deny services and then, you know, a week later, their child, you know, they got to call Baker Act or, or, or something happens outside of the home where, you know, sheriff or police are involved, are we all now communicating back, like, right? So now that comes back to school, school go back and say, listen, you know, Mr. Choate, we told, you know, we, we, we had this conversation about, you know, your son or daughter, whatever. And so as long as that, that's happened, I mean, I think that's really key to having all of the pieces of the puzzle together, you know, working. Because a lot of this is, you know, you could have some, some issues for a student, maybe because of homeless, maybe they got evicted, maybe that, you know what I mean? And so as long as that's all working, I know we had Project Heart, you know, a couple of months ago, we had them come in, talk to us in a workshop. So as long as all this is working together.
Our work under federal programs, um, you know, even in our work with, um, you know, our director of ESOL. All, all of this is, is, and, and now we have it under one umbrella in the district, so we can better coordinate. But, but it also involves, like you said, with Unitas and our community.
Great. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Uh, Dr. Weisong, anything?
No, sir.
All right. Um, that was great. Good presentation. Um, the three-day weekend, thank you to our veterans. Again, appreciate it. Uh, we will see you all next week, Tuesday, for our regular meeting. We are adjourned.